... is one of a misdemeanor conviction. City Attorney believes that, uh, that issue impacting federal funding, uh, through an exclusion clause does not apply to a local municipal ordinance. And in the interpretation of the city attorney, it appears that it would only apply to convictions under federal or state law.
There have been some examples where the city council has not been comfortable with the position that the city attorney has given to you. Is this an opportunity that you might want to take to consult outside counsel?
No, absolutely not. I mean, I think we were in sync. Uh, as you know, the first vote was 12 to 1. There was 12 people who voted yes and only one person who voted no.
No, I understand. I meant in order to make sure that you're on as solid a ground as you believe you are.
No, no, they've been working on this for two years.
Oh, okay.
You know, it's not, this is not an overnight ordinance. This is, and an ordinance based on lots and lots of casework, lots of outreach, uh, to the hospital association, uh, and they, they actually filed a case against Kaiser and Kaiser has revised and updated their discharge protocols and they're already operating, uh, in a manner which would be construed as in conformance with this ordinance even though the ordinance had not even been adopted yet.
Well, if Jan Perry is comfortable with it, then I'm comfortable with it. You're obviously the expert. What's the advantage to hospitals dumping patients? Is some sort of cost savings?
I can't imagine. I, I couldn't answer that question. I don't know, other than maybe due to a bed shortage and, you know, just a general stress of, you know, hospital, that all hospitals go through. I, I can't imagine that there's an advantage to that.
Obviously, if it's happening in the city of Los Angeles, it's clearly happening as well in the county of Los Angeles because of the overlap.
We had somebody brought, uh, down from Orange County and dumped in Skid Row just a few weeks ago.
Are you getting any cooperation or any indication of interest in this from the county board of supervisors?
Uh, no.
Okay. It could very well be that that's something that, uh, that we'll be hearing about soon.
Uh, yes.
Now, as you know, you had proposed a level of sanctions against any hospital that was found to be patient dumping. Could you give us some background on that?
Well, we wanted to, uh, seek a level of fine that would, you know, have people make sure that they didn't just incorporate it into the cost of doing business, you know, and just, you know, that it was inconsequential.
Let's make it clear to our viewers, of course, that not all hospiters, hospitals are guilty of this practice.
That's right.
And it's also other agencies and health providers that may be involved.
Yes. You're absolutely right.
What about a state role in all of this?
Well, they did try to take it to the state and the governor vetoed it at the state level. The hospital lobby is very powerful and was obviously able to, you know, gain ground up at the state level with the legislators there, but such was not to be the case here.
Speaking of the powerful hospital lobby, obviously you're aware that later, in a later session of the city council, there was a change in the level of, uh, fine that might be levied against such a hospital.
Yeah, we had to, we had to revise that based on advice from the city attorney.
Okay. Can you give us the background on how that came about?
Uh, it, it was basically, I think they were reviewing, uh, state, state documents and made that recommendation to us. And that was fine.
It's also been suggested, though, in the wake of that, that $1,000 for patient dumping incident, that's just the cost of doing business. That's not a discernment.
Well, yeah, absolutely. I mean, I think I'm the one who just suggested that, but then, you know, we still have the issue of, of the option or this new tool, which the city attorney did not have before, which is the ability, the choice, the option of prosecuting as a misdemeanor.
Okay. And now there's been voted on unanimously for a second time.
Yeah, no, 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 we haven't voted second yet. That'll be coming up next week.
Oh, okay.
Second reading, that's what it's called, second reading.
All right. Well, then we'll look forward to the disposition of it next week.
Yeah.
Before we let you go, Ms. Perry, uh, you're gonna have a new park in your district very soon, an exciting park.
Well, we've been working on it for four years and working with the MTA for four very, very long years. And I feel that people deserve it and I look forward to, you know, having MTA move off the property and us closing the escrow and, uh, breaking the ground and doing the testing and creating something beautiful for people.
You and I have discussed before here on Channel 35 the importance of wetlands and especially urban wetlands such as this. Tell us about the park.
Well, it'll be a very large wetland, be about seven acres. It'll be an educational facility. We'll have some of the historic buildings that are on the site now left behind as, uh, places for community groups to gather and to hold meetings. And, um, it should be a multi-disciplined, uh, park, passive park, that people will be able to find almost, um, anything they want in terms of California native plants, learn about wastewater management and runoff, better management of water, uh, and, uh, just replenishing the environment.
That sounds terrific. District Nine Councilmember Jan Perry, as always, thanks for joining us on Council Week in Review.
Thanks for having me.
Although item number six passed with a vote of 12 ayes and one no, an ordinance requires a unanimous vote to pass on the first reading. The item was reconsidered at Friday, May 16th meeting, where the maximum fine was set at $1,000, and that passed unanimously. L.A. City View is the government access cable channel for the city of Los Angeles, featuring live coverage of city council meetings and programming about city department services and events. Now, if you have suggestions or comments about any of the programs you see here on Channel 35 or would like to receive a free viewer guide, call our viewer hotline at (213) 473-3978. And we invite you to address the Los Angeles City Council on any item on the council agenda, as well as during public comment. You may come downtown to City Hall or go to the Van Nuys City Hall and participate via video teleconferencing. Remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays beginning at 10:00 a.m. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at 10:00 a.m. Council Week in Review can be seen Monday through Friday at 9:30 a.m. and 6:30 p.m. and on Sunday at 9:30 a.m. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending May 16th, 2008. On behalf of Sahel, Hello, and everyone here on Channel 35, I'm Jack Popejoy. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
The city of Los Angeles. When duty calls, the LAPD responds.
911, emergency.
I'm standing by your doorstep.
How old is your daughter?
She's four years old. Her name is Annel.
I lost my puppy. Can you help me?
We have a critical missing. There is an Amber Alert, so let's look for any information you get, pass that into the Watch Commander. Let's be careful out there.
To fight crime and to keep our streets safe.
I think going nuts if this is my dog.
We're sharing this at 7855, 7855, 201, security. They can't harden, they can't harden at the child market. Suspect family, 958, last night, not off your doors, while they could probably take these crazy, code three.
7865, Roger.
All units, code four, lift the Catalina suspect.
Standing with our community.
Los Angeles Police Department, this warning issued an Amber Alert. A suspect is driving a black Honda Civic.
Working as a team.
Hey, what's up?
Uh, I think I saw that car that you were looking for.
Did you show us?
Yeah.
Let's go.
They take pride in what they do.
Okay, 910, code six, under every equal.
And when duty calls, the LAPD responds.
Deposit upon the vehicle.
Raj. Last luck to you, a positive on the Amber Alert vehicle.
It looks like they found the car.
The LAPD is hiring. Become a part of the team. Visit us at joinlapd.com. L.A. City View, Channel 35. Your city, your channel.[502.12]
Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the City Council meeting for the 23rd of May 2008. We are here in the John Farrow Council Chambers where we meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Welcome to our members of the audience that are here with us in council chambers and to our viewers on Channel 35 which broadcasts us live and rebroadcast us twice each evening when we meet. As I mentioned, we meet here every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. We meet the first Friday of the month usually in Van Nuys City Hall in our efforts to bring City Hall closer to all Angelinos. Each Friday, we honor members of the community and notables who have achieved important things for Los Angeles here, and we'll be starting that shortly. But we wanted to let folks know that you can also watch us online at lacity.org. So if you're near a computer and not a television, you can always watch us online or catch past footage that is archived of our past meetings as well. Finally, you can use your telephone and call council phone at 213-621-CITY to listen in to any of our council meetings or any of our committee meetings as well. I'm Council President Eric Garcetti, joined by my colleagues, Council Members Tony Cardenas, Wendy Grul, Jose Uizar, Tom Labange, Jan Perry, Bill Rosendahl, Greg Smith, Jack Weiss, and Dennis Zine. We do have 10 members of our body, or two-thirds, which constitutes a quorum. So with that, Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Alecon, Cardenas, Grul, Han, Uizar, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 10 members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
All right, first order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
All right, Mr. Rosendahl moves, Ms. Perry seconds, without objection, those will be approved. Next order of business?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
All right, I'll move those, and Mr. Labange seconds, without objection, those two will be approved. We can run through the agenda before we go to presentations, please.
Items 1 through 5 are items noticed for public hearing. Mr. President, building and safety recommends that item number 1 be received and filed in as much as payment was received, and there are also cards on 1 and 2.
Okay, let's go ahead then and move the receiving file of 1 and cards.
Mr. President, there's a card on that.
Oh, sorry, there's a card on 1, excuse me, let's call that special and call number 2 special. That leaves us 3 through 5. Any specials, colleagues, 3 through 5? If not, let's go ahead and open the roll on those, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Those are approved, next items, please.
Next are items 6 through 8, and those are items which public hearings have been held and the reports for those items have been submitted.
Let's go ahead, any specials on those, 6 through 8? No specials for 6 through 8, let's go ahead then and open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay, that is approved, next items, please.
Next are items 9 through 15, and those are items which public hearings have not been held, 10 votes are required for consideration, and Mr. President, there are cards on 10, 11, 12, and 13.
Okay, we'll call those special. Yes, Ms. Perry?
Mr. President, I'd like to hold item 10 on the desk for now.
Okay, we'll call it special for cards as well. 9, and 14, and 15, if anybody wishes to call those special. If not, we'll go ahead and open and close the public hearings, and if we can take up those balance of those items, open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
If we can, please call the, reset the regular meeting and call the roll for the special meeting.
Alecon, Cardenas, Grul, Han, Uizar, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 10 members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, we have colleagues, item number 16, anybody wishing to call that special? Mr. Uizar?
Can I call it special, please?
Sure. Number 16, if we can continue that item into the regular meeting and adjourn the special meeting. That will take us to our presentations, and I'd like to begin our first presentation for our DWP Science Bowl winners, and recognize our President Pro Tem and Councilwoman from the 2nd District, Councilmember Wendy Grul. And I said this before the TV was on, but we want to wish Ms. Grul a very, very happy birthday today.
Yeah, thank you. Come on, I know they're here. Thank you very much, Mr. President, and I am so pleased to be here today with a very special group of high school students and members of our city employee family who have made this recognition possible. With me today is the North Hollywood High School Science Bowl team, their coach and employees from the Department of Water and Power. In February, North Hollywood won the LA DWP Science Bowl Regional Competition for the 10th time in the last 11 years. I think that deserves a round of applause, the 10th time in the last 11 years. As the regional championship team, they represented the city and the region of the U.S. Department of Energy National Science Bowl in Washington, DC at the beginning of May. In this competition, some of the top students in the nation compete in a game show-style event with challenging college-level math and science toss-up and bonus questions. This year, there were 67 teams representing more than 40 states. North Hollywood was among the very top teams, only 1 of 6 that made it into the second day of competition. Our state did very well, 10 of the 67 teams were from California, and proudly, 4 of the 6 teams were from California. The first-place team was from Santa Monica High School, and the second from Sacramento. North Hollywood actually beat Santa Monica in the first round of the championship competition and tied the eventual second-place team in regulation time. North Hollywood tied for 6 places, which is a feat of which we are all very proud. I would like to introduce Coach Alter Main and the team captain, Angela Shi, who is heading to Yale. The other team members include Emily Yee, Brian Kim, Ryan Thorngrin, and Murtaza Safi. The Science Bowl has been hosted by the Department of Water and Power for several years, and representing DWP this year is Kim Hughes, a public relations specialist in their Public Affairs Division. I would also like to thank George Raphael, George Duddles, Gloria, Anna Karikio, Eddie Aranda, Larry Dalton, Jeannie Denistran, Heidi Heroka, Kim Hughes, Hadath Mendoza, and Melinda Rowe for all their hard work on the DWP Science Bowl competition. So I'd like Alter, Angela Shi, and Kimberly Hughes to please say a few words in recognizing the wonderful students that are with us today.
Thank you for having us here. It's a real pleasure to work with these students. They're brilliant, they're fun, they're excited about learning, and they make it a pleasure to go to work every day as a teacher. I would like to thank the DWP for making Science Bowl happen. It's an amazing opportunity for really exceptionally talented students to push a lot past what they could really normally get in a high school, and it's a lot of fun going to DC and representing Los Angeles at the Nationals. So thanks for having us.
Thank you, thank you. Excuse me, Angela?
Hi, my name is Angela Shi, and I would just like to thank everyone here for this opportunity. Science Bowl has been one of the best experiences of my high school career, and it's been so gratifying bonding with all these people and being able to learn what I want to learn and to explore all avenues of science and mathematics and delve into areas that I didn't even know existed. So, thank you for this, and it's nice to know that our work is appreciated.
Thank you, thank you. Kimberly?
I was supposed to be on vacation.
Okay, go ahead, all right.
I'm Walter Zeisel, I'm the manager of Environmental Communications and Educational Services at DWP, and for the last, since we've done this program, been sort of the lead coordinator and manager over this program. We really appreciate the City Council and the city's recognition for the program, and I want to thank personally Councilmember Grul for this recognition. This has been the 16th year that DWP has been involved with this program, the 15th that we've hosted. Just wanted to mention that in addition to the 12-member steering committee, we also have a series of our employees from a lot of different offices that participate, our security, our different custodial offices, people throughout the department. We also have about 100 volunteers to participate in addition that make it possible to run the event. And then, it's really a citywide community activity because we've received funding from a number of different organizations that I thought would be appropriate to mention. It includes Hitachi and also the Hitachi Foundation, City National Bank, IEEE, the Engineers Council, Office Depot, Gelson's Markets, the Water and Power Credit Union, and City View Channel 35 has also been a sponsor and has produced for a number of years the video on the program. In fact, this year, I believe for last year's program, they won third place in a video competition. So we really appreciate the recognition for the department and for these wonderful students. I had an opportunity to participate with them at Science Bowl in Washington, DC, and they're great individual students and individuals, and they're leaders in their own community. We're very proud of them, both in their academic accomplishment and in their own personal development. We're just glad to be a part of, being able to help and to encourage our young people to attain growth and academic achievement. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And colleagues, you know, we often only hear about those students who get in trouble, who are not reaching their goals. Today, we get to celebrate those young people who work hard every single day to make our city proud, and particularly the 2nd Council District. And to see that they've won 10 out of the 11 last years is a pretty amazing accomplishment. And so I want to thank the students, their teachers, the principal, and DWP for making this possible. If we could all give them a great round of applause on this item. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President. And we'll go in the back. Okay? Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Labange wanted to add one good wish.
Wendy, I just want to congratulate the Huskies at North Hollywood, their great teacher, their great students, that you always bring pride to the city of Los Angeles, every Science Bowl. And I especially want to thank the Department of Water and Power and their one employee, Walter Zeisel, whose heart and soul has been supporting this Science Bowl, which gets the great support of the department. I stopped by for a minute earlier this year when the competition was going on, and it was as busy as any one of our power plants at peak load of the students' activity throughout the office, job for our office building. Congratulations, North Hollywood, great job in your efforts. Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you very much. Our next presentation is from Councilwoman Jan Perry of the great 9th District.
Yep, absolutely, you're the man. Great honor. And so we SC folks too. That's funny. Thank you very much, Mr. President, and I have the pleasure of being joined by jazz great Mr. Charles Lloyd and Councilman Nate Holden, and Mr. Lloyd has his entourage here today. He is a jazz musician whose music and talents are loved by many. Mr. Lloyd was born in Memphis, Tennessee, and from an early age, he was immersed in the city's rich musical life and was exposed to jazz. He began playing the saxophone at the age of 9 and took lessons from pianist Phineas Newborn, and later became a sideman in the blues bands of BB King, Holland Wolf, Bobby Bluebland, and others. In 1956, Mr. Lloyd left Memphis for Los Angeles to earn his Masters in Music at the University of Southern California, where he studied with Halcy Stevens, a foremost Bartok authority. While most of his days were spent in academia, he spent his nights playing at LA's jazz clubs with Ornette Coleman, Billy Higgins, Scott LaFaro, Don Cherry, Charlie Hayden, Eric Dolphy, Bobby Hutcherson, and other leading West Coast jazz artists. One of his many accomplishments includes being voted Jazz Artist of the Year by Downbeat and the Quartet in 1967. He has also had the privilege of being one of the few jazz musicians to sell over 1 million recording albums. This year, Mr. Lloyd celebrated his 70th birthday on March 15th, and just four days before, he released Rabo de Nube, his 12th recording album and first since the formation of his new quartet. It is truly an honor and a pleasure to recognize him here today. He is a pioneer in the jazz profession and has paved the way for so many who have followed after him. So let's give him a big round of applause at his well-deserved. Does he want to say something? Okay, go ahead.
No, as you well know now, that Charles Lloyd has been an outstanding jazz musician, entertaining people all around the world. And he got the start right in Memphis, Tennessee. But after coming to Los Angeles, Jan has already stated that he attended USC. And I thought it was appropriate that one USC grad present a certificate of commendation, which they've accomplished a lot, to another USC grad who got his master's degree there in music, and he should be so honored. He was introduced to Chico Hamilton, which I, we all heard him perform and did such a good job entertaining us, and also he was trained by Buddy Collette. I called Buddy a little while ago, and they say he was on his way here, but he'll be here eventually for sure. But I just want you guys to know that this young man has, his talent and creativity has been gone unnoticed for so long, here at home where he should be so honored. And so, Jan Perry, I want to commend you and the members of the City Council, Mr. President, my dear friend Herb Wesson, and all of each, one of you for joining in this great celebration for my friend Charles Lloyd.
Mr. Lloyd?
Thank you. Mr. President, Ms. Perry, and my friend Nate Holden, I'd like to thank you very kindly. I did come here from Memphis, but I graduated from USC, and it was a great time in my life. And there was a wonderful mentor, Buddy Collette, who was the spiritual father of Charles Mingus, Eric Dolphy, myself, and many others, and we were hopeful that he would be here today also. He had a stroke, and so sometimes he's a little slow, but he's a beautiful soul. And again, in memory and in honor of him, I accept to be honored here, and thank you kindly.
Thank you. Thank you.
We've got some good news to announce from Council District 10 on adoption Friday, so I'd like to quickly recognize Council District 10, and then we'll, after that, hear from Council District 14, and Jose Uizar will be on deck.
Thank you, Mr. President and members. Everybody knows, or some people know, that twice a month on Friday, it's Pet Adoption Friday. And I have a beautiful mixed border collie that's with me today, and her name is Nanette. And the one bad thing, when the dogs get here a little early, you have people walk past and they see the dog, so it's my understanding, this dog has already been adopted, correct? So, all of you that are, and I mean, look at this dog, look at this. So she already has a home, but anybody that's watching this on Channel 35, please call 888-542-7381, because we have hundreds of companion animals that are looking for a new mom and a new dad. So, in about an hour, Nanette will be on her way to her new home, and she was also adopted by, here, put your arm around me, she was also adopted by a city employee, so our 100% adoption rate continues. And, Mr. President, when the new mother comes to claim the dog, I will bring her in and make sure that everybody knows that she's a new mom. But anyway, anyone that wants a companion animal, please call 888-542-7381. Basically, what this is about, we're trying to save the lives of these wonderful animals. If you want unconditional love, you will find it from a lovely puppy or a kitten. So please, call 888-452-7381. Trust me, we got hundreds of them. Thank you, Mr. President.
Before you leave, Mr. Cardenas wants to add his.
Councilmember Wesson, what's the sad, sad, round figure of the number of animals that get euthanized in our city on average in a year? Isn't it close to like 30-some thousand, close to 40,000?
The number's too many, and I do think it's close to that. So this is, we're just saving one dog's life here.
So, the thing is, part of what you're doing here is to create the awareness that people should focus on adopting animals and also focus on spaying neutering things of that nature, so that we reduce that number down to zero someday, correct?
Yes, because it's a tragedy whenever you have to put down a dog or a cat that is not ill and is not dangerous. And I guess, I should say this, Mr. President, normally, when we have little bitty dogs, I carry them. This dog is a little too big for me, so I have my assistant from Animal Services with us today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wesson. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Jose Uizar from the 14th Council District for our next presentation. After that, we'll hear from Mr. Zine.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and I'm very proud to stand here today to recognize the 25th anniversary of a very important organization in northeast Los Angeles, the Uptown Gay and Lesbian Alliance, which is celebrating 25 years of providing service, support systems, and allowing people for self-discovery in northeast Los Angeles. It's a great time to celebrate, but at the same time, we are also acknowledging some of the struggles that have happened in the past and how this organization came to be. You see, in 1983, a gay man was shot and killed outside a gay bar in Highland Park. Ralter Gus DeClaro, owner of Uptown Properties, was a friend of the slain man and called his friends together for a meeting to protest the relative inaction in the case. From that meeting, the Uptown Gay and Lesbian Alliance was born to ensure that issues like this were addressed not only in northeast Los Angeles, but throughout the city of Los Angeles. Today, UGLA is a California nonprofit corporation and is listed as a charitable organization, and from its inception, it has maintained adherence to its mission statement, which is, "The Uptown Gay and Lesbian Alliance is a charitable and educational nonprofit service organization. Primary goals are to provide a support system for lesbians and gay men, and education for individuals and the community at large on the true nature of homosexuality." Ladies and gentlemen, I have with me here two men who continue to live up to that goal and mission statement. If you attend any event in Eagle Rock or northeast Los Angeles, they are there with big smiles, very friendly people, friends of mine, and they are both Carls, so we oftentimes confuse one with the other. But ladies and gentlemen, please welcome Carl Johnson and Carl Mathis, both are UGLA Board of Director members, and I wanted to present to them a certificate, a resolution from the city of Los Angeles, thanking you individually for the work you do on behalf of our communities, and to congratulate you on 25 years of service to the community through UGLA. Congratulations.
Mr. Rosendahl?
Yeah, it obviously perked my interest to stand up and say a word or two, to meet kinship gentlemen from Eagle Rock area there. I'd like to know more about what you have going there and how it works. I live in the west side, of course, and we find that the gay outreach programs gets less and less as people have moved to Silver Lake and Eagle Rock and West Hollywood and Hollywood and places like that. But I want to applaud you and stand up and recognize and appreciate the fact that you are trailblazers and pioneers for our basic civil and human rights, and on this very auspicious moment, where on May 15th, the courts in California recognized that civil unions aren't the answer, but marriage is, and that basic human and civil rights for homosexuals is a must. I saw a poll this morning that was encouraging, that Californians are beginning to get it. And what we really realize is that when people know someone who is gay, they change their whole dynamic. The past has always been, "I don't know anybody who's gay, therefore I can buy into this perverted religious concept that we're not made in God's image and likeness." But once they meet somebody, and it's their brother, their sister, their aunt, their uncle, their cousin, and see, they're just as normal as everybody else, they begin to change. People under 45 have more of those relationships than people our age, frankly, have had. And if there was any value in that horrific Holocaust, the AIDS epidemic that we went through, was that people came out of their closet and people began to realize that we are everybody and part of the human condition, and it's our nature, and our nature isn't something we choose or prefer, it's something that we are, and we accept ourselves, and we truly believe nature, which comes from God, therefore, God makes no mistake. And bless you too, for your leadership in that in the Eagle Rock area. Thank you.
I want to thank our Councilmember Jose Uizar, and thank you, Councilman Rosendahl, for your words. We're particularly happy that Councilman Uizar has been so supportive of our group. Next month is Gay Pride Month in Los Angeles, we want to thank the Council for their support of that resolution. Also, we want to thank Mayor Villarogosa for his willingness to step forward in support of same-sex marriage, and our community has a, what we call a battle ahead of us in trying to not allow this ban to go into the Constitution of California. And I want to also recognize my partner here, I don't know how threatening we look as individuals, but we've been together 41 years, and we're very happy that today, through Councilman Uizar's office, we're able to accept the resolution in memory, not in memory, but in honor of UGLA's 25th anniversary. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. Thank you very much, colleagues, and I just wanted to say one final thing, that it is a very different day in northeast Los Angeles, but at the same time, we have a lot more work to do. And it's great to see a group like UGLA, who is just a group in northeast Los Angeles, and doesn't really stand out from the rest for what they represent. They are part of the community, they are part of the culture of northeast Los Angeles, and that's what we hope to achieve throughout the city of LA. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and thank you as well, on behalf of my constituents as well, and thank you for all you do in northeast Los Angeles, and it's been great to join you for many, many an event when I was first running. But I want to applaud you and stand up and recognize and appreciate the fact that you are trailblazers and pioneers for our basic civil and human rights, and on this very auspicious moment, where on May 15th, the courts in California recognized that civil unions aren't the answer, but marriage is, and that basic human and civil rights for homosexuals is a must. I saw a poll this morning that was encouraging, that Californians are beginning to get it. And what we really realize is that when people know someone who is gay, they change their whole dynamic. The past has always been, "I don't know anybody who's gay, therefore I can buy into this perverted religious concept that we're not made in God's image and likeness." But once they meet somebody, and it's their brother, their sister, their aunt, their uncle, their cousin, and see, they're just as normal as everybody else, they begin to change. People under 45 have more of those relationships than people our age, frankly, have had. And if there was any value in that horrific Holocaust, the AIDS epidemic that we went through, was that people came out of their closet and people began to realize that we are everybody and part of the human condition. And it's our nature, and our nature isn't something we choose or prefer, it's something that we are, and we accept ourselves, and we truly believe nature, which comes from God, therefore God makes no mistake. And bless you too, for your leadership in that in the Eagle Rock area. Thank you.
I want to thank our Councilmember Jose Uizar, and thank you, Councilman Rosendahl, for your words. We're particularly happy that Councilman Uizar's been so supportive of our group. Next month is Gay Pride Month in Los Angeles, we want to thank the Council for their support of that resolution. Also, we want to thank Mayor Villarogosa for his willingness to step forward in support of same-sex marriage. And our community has a, what we call, a battle ahead of us in trying to not allow this ban to go into the Constitution of California. And I want to also recognize my partner here, I don't know how threatening we look as individuals, but we've been together 41 years, and we're very happy that today, through Councilman Uizar's office, we're able to accept the resolution in memory, not in memory, but in honor of UGLA's 25th anniversary. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. Thank you very much, colleagues, and I just wanted to say one final thing, that it is a very different day in northeast Los Angeles, but at the same time, we have a lot more work to do. And it's great to see a group like UGLA, who is just a group in northeast Los Angeles, and doesn't really stand out from the rest for what they represent, they are part of the community, they are part of the culture of northeast Los Angeles, and that's what we hope to achieve throughout the city of L.A. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and thank you as well, on behalf of my constituents as well, and thank you for all you do in northeast Los Angeles, and it's been great to join you for many an event when I was first running, really appreciated that as well. Okay, next we will be recognizing Councilmember Dennis Zine from the 3rd Council District. With Greg Smith from the 12th District.
Well, we're joined by Reserve Officer Eric Rose, Serial R1531. And why are we here honoring Reserve Officer Eric Rose? You don't know, but we're gonna tell you, Eric Rose. Pleased to honor Reserve Officer Eric Rose, Serial R1531, for receiving the Reserve Officer of the Year for 2008, from the Peace Officers Association of LA County, the Reserve Officer of the Year from the entire county of Los Angeles. Officer Rose entered the Police Academy October 1987, graduated as a field-certified Reserve Officer. Now, as a 20-year veteran of the LAPD Reserve Corps, Officer Rose has been a certified, designated Level 1 officer since 1989, has donated more than 18,500 hours of time to the LAPD and residents of the city of Los Angeles. Epitomizes the Reserve Officer Program with his exceptional commitment to the community. Spent his police life giving his time and helping others in the Reserve Program, often taking new officers under his wing. He has spent over two decades doing work at the very front line of policing, often putting in very, very long hours for no pay. During the 1992 citywide civil unrest, and again in 1994, after the devastating Northridge earthquake, Officer Rose went directly to the police station, where he suited up, quickly joined other officers, and gave needed support to the understaffed police department. Officer Rose has been an integral part of Reserve Corps, currently the only Reserve Officer in the United States assigned to the United States Marshals Los Angeles Regional Fugitive Task Force, also a part of the federal marshals program. Task Force targets violent fugitives wanted for state, local, and federal offenses comprised of investigators and officers from the United States Marshal Service, Alcohol, Tobacco, Firearms, Secret Service, Immigration, Customs, and 23 other agencies. Also found the time to assist the department with the skills he uses in his full-time job. In a time when every patrol cap in the department has had less than one year in grade, Assistant Chief Earl Preisinger called upon Officer Rose to assist in providing vital training to new LAPD captains. Officer Rose volunteered this valuable time to participate in mentoring sessions designed to provide practical skills relating to media interviews for new LAPD captains. By all accounts, the training was a complete success. Participants gained valuable experience in the art of controlling and directing media interviews to achieve a desired outcome. You hear that, media? He's the manipulator for it. No spin. Over the years, Reserve Officer Eric Rose extended his value to the LAPD by assisting the department in a number of unique ways. Designed campaigns to enhance youth-based programs in the LAPD. Officers have repeatedly praised his teamwork, integrity, ingenuity, and marketing powers. In addition to helping create a youth-based marketing agenda, authored a landmark survey of LAPD Reserve Officer Program that resulted in the first LAPD Reserve Initiative Report, contained 20 recommendations on how to improve the morale and the Reserve Program. Initiatives were later adopted by the Police Commission and this body, the Los Angeles City Council. In an era when our department struggles with the philosophy of how best to influence its customers and serve the customers, Officer Rose clearly understands the need to do so, and when given the opportunity possesses the aptitude to market the department in a profoundly positive way. Never sought recognition for his efforts, and quietly works on behalf of the residents of Los Angeles. Years of service to both the LAPD and the Reserve Corps have been characterized by professionalism and enthusiasm for whatever task he has undertaken. Truly inspirational role model and terrific example to others. Been recognized many times in his career with commendations for his outstanding performance in the field and his faithful attention to duty. Has turned his caring and compassion into a passion that is infectious. 20 years later, his hard work does more than keep the community safe, consistently bringing together fellow Reserve Officers to assist those in our community who need help most. In his personal life, he and his wife made their home in Simi Valley, they have two children, Erica's a partner in a public relations firm based in Los Angeles. Living proof through his actions that the LAPD Reserve Program still possesses officers who have a commitment to improving the health and well-being of the communities they serve every single day. A worthy and deserving recipient of the honor, take pride in honoring Reserve Officer Eric Rose for being named the Outstanding Reserve Officer of the Year 2008 for Los Angeles County. And now, my colleague, Reserve Officer Greg Smith.
Thank you very much, Dennis. About 1990, 1991, a good friend of mine, Eric Rose, worked for Councilwoman Laura Chick at the time, and I was thinking about becoming a Reserve Officer myself, so I went over to talk to Eric. He gave me valuable insight and tips on how to go about it, what I needed to do to achieve that goal myself. In 1992, I graduated from the Police Academy, just like Eric had done a few years before me, and on the third night on the job, I went out in a patrol car with Eric, worked West Valley Division, Laura Chick's district, not my own, but Laura's district at the time, and learned a lot about what it is to be a Reserve Officer in LAPD. Since that time, Eric Rose has been kind of the go-to guy in the small but vibrant LAPD Reserve Program. Whenever we needed somebody to speak for our Reserve Officers, we went to Eric. When we needed somebody to campaign for us, to get reforms within LAPD, it was Eric Rose that was the one that helped write those reports. Whenever we wanted a spokesman, for whatever it was, for a single officer, or the program, or trying to keep it alive, when they tried to actually almost close down the Reserve Program, Eric Rose was the one that led the effort to keep it alive. And so I am very, very appreciative to Eric Rose, one, as a friend, two, as a colleague, and three, as someone who has really been an outspoken spokesman for the LAPD Reserve Program, kept it alive, kept it running, and made it what it is today. And now we're on the road back up, I understand we have a number of classes coming in this year for the first time in years, and this program will take off again, once again. And it's because of Eric Rose. Eric Rose has really been one of those guys that kept it alive, and so I'm just honored to be here to pay tribute to his years of service, to remind people around the shoe, horseshoe. Reserve Officers give between $4 and $10 million every year in free service to the people of L.A., and they can't thank guys like Eric Rose enough. So I'm just honored to be here and say thank you to my friend and colleague, and thank you to a great Reserve Officer. You've done us great pride and respect countywide, and we're honored to be one of your friends. Thank you.
Thank you, and before Eric, you speak, Councilmember Uizar, I think, yes, Mr. Uizar.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and Reserve Officer Rose, I just wanted to congratulate you and thank you for your service. I've known you for some years now, and whether it was on public safety or other issues that affect the residents of Los Angeles, your commitment and dedication has always been there, so congratulations, this is a recognition well-deserved. I want to thank Councilmembers Zine and Smith for bringing you forward and telling Los Angeles the great work that you've been doing and your commitment to making sure that our streets are safer, so thank you so much. Thank you.
I accept this award really on behalf of all the Reserve Officers. It's indicative of the work that Reserve Officers do throughout the city of Los Angeles, so thank you. And a real quick story, I know I've worked with both of my colleagues here as officers, but Dennis Zine in particular, people don't know that I went on a ride-along with Dennis when I was 17-years-old, and it helped inspire me to join the LAPD, so you can blame Dennis for my being here today as well.
No personal complaints?
And I had no 181s with him, 128s now, thank you, Dennis.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Yes, I'd just like to add my congratulations to Eric. He has been a fabulous public servant on a number of levels, but particularly to the Los Angeles Police Department, when they told me 20 years, that really is an amazing accomplishment, and so I want to add my congratulations to my colleagues and the rest of the city council, so congratulations. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Zine. Mr. Garcetti.
Bring up whoever you want. They can be with you.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and, you know, Franklin Delano Roosevelt once said, "Democracy cannot succeed unless those who express their choice are prepared to choose wisely." The real safeguard of democracy, therefore, is education. Today, we honor Mr. Todd Clark for his 30 years of work with the Constitutional Rights Foundation, to educate young people about our democracy and to prepare them for participating in civic life. The Constitutional Rights Foundation is a community-based organization that I think is familiar to so many young people throughout Los Angeles, and certainly is very familiar to those of us here at City Hall. It sponsors K-12 education programs, trains teachers to use innovative programming and materials to teach young people about their most basic democratic rights and civic participation here in our democracy. Each year, several thousand lawyers, judges, and community volunteers work with young people in Constitutional Rights Foundation's programs in Los Angeles and California. Before I came here, I was teaching at Occidental College and had the great joy of working with Todd when we had the Democratic National Convention here. And the Constitutional Rights Foundation was an integral partner in a youth convention that we held in parallel to the Democratic National Convention, to teach young people not only about the presidential nominating process, but to empower them and give their voices a platform to be heard as well. Todd Clark first joined the Constitutional Rights Foundation in 1967 as Education Director, and he served as Executive Director from 1989 through March 2008, a stellar record. He's a former high school history and government teacher, so he's a natural in the education field, but he's also the past president of both the National Council for the Social Studies and for the California Council for the Social Studies as well. He also serves on the advisory committees of several state and national projects on citizenship and service learning, and is a board member of Civitas International. He's a member of the Executive Committee of the National Carnegie Campaign for the Civic Mission of Schools, and is the Project Director of the California Campaign for the Civic Mission of Schools. He was the founding editor of the Bill of Rights in Action, which is a national publication for high school social studies and history teachers, and he's authored numerous curriculum materials that are now used in high schools throughout the U.S. You know, yesterday I was at the Convention Center, and one of the largest swearing-in ceremonies, it actually was three ceremonies back-to-back at our Convention Center, 10,000, 10,000, 10,000 new Americans took their oath of citizenship, and 30,000 Americans were circulating around the South Hall of the Convention Center. It gave me pause, because Los Angeles is such an embodiment of what is great about America, but it also reminded me that they were these new Americans who had just learned their fundamental rights, coming from places where often those rights are unavailable to them, and it cuts to the core mission of what Todd Clark is all about, and what the Constitutional Rights Foundation is about. So we all congratulate and thank Todd for 30 years of engaging generations of young people in our communities, and it gives us great joy, myself and Bill Rosendahl here, seconding this resolution to Todd Clark on everything he has done, and I know he has many friends that have joined him here that are part of the Constitutional Rights Foundation, but please congratulate him on the great accomplishments he has made.
And before he speaks, I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Rosendahl.
Yeah, I had the pleasure of being on the board at one point, when I was the cable guy doing my television shows, and just the fact that you give all that energy out there and get the young people involved, you've been a tremendous contributor to the quality of life and to the discourse in our nation. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Bill, thank you, Eric, thanks to all the members of the council who, over the years, have been involved in one way or another in almost all of the Constitutional Rights Foundation programs. It's been a great career for me, it's one that I don't consider to be over at this point. I've stepped down as Executive Director, but I'm still doing consulting at CRF. I also want to admonish the council, and then make an offer. In the first place, I have tried over the years to persuade members of the council to give more focused attention to preparing young people to understand this incredibly crazy system that we've created for ourselves here in Los Angeles. We do almost nothing. There's virtually nothing in the curriculum in California on local or state government, there's virtually nothing on the curriculum of Los Angeles or Los Angeles City and County in the curriculum for young people who are growing up in Los Angeles. I've tried in working with the Commission on Children and Youth, and with many of you, beginning with the effort with Eric, actually, on the 2000 convention, to promote the idea that there should be annually, at least once every year, a forum that involves young people from all of the council districts in considering and talking about and learning about city government and making proposals for things that need to be done. It's never been something that's been very high on anybody's agenda. Everybody believes it's important, everybody nods that it should be done, everybody is concerned that we don't do it, but in fact, we really must do it. We've had the opportunity to create a research program in recent years here as a part of our Civic Mission for Schools program in California. We've researched the degree to which young people in California are exposed to the best practices in civic education, and have discovered, no surprise, that the lower you go down in the socioeconomic scale, the fewer opportunities young people have to learn about our system. So there's all the more reason, as we talk about new immigrants, people coming here from parts of the world where they have very little positive experience with democratic institutions, there's a vital need that more be done, and you can do that. I'm still around, I'd be happy to help anybody who'd like to organize a planning committee as a part of council activities, and work with you on the creation of some kind of a continuing effort to do a better job with young people. That said, I thank you again for this recognition. I hope that we'll be able to work together on a program that will really do a far more effective job of preparing young people to take part in our government than we've done today. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Garcetti, I know you have the next presentation, if I can, I just want to introduce a group of students that are here.
Sure, absolutely.
We have students from Apperson Elementary School in my district, in Sunland, 4th and 5th graders. If you all could stand, and the camera could show right there, or just stand right there where you are in the pews, and wave your hands, so the camera will get you. This is great school in my district, Apperson Elementary, I know the camera's gonna, there they are. Let's give them a great round of applause, Apperson Elementary School, and their teachers that are here today. Thank you for visiting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Madam President. Come on up, Mr. Bullock and Reverend Epps. Colleagues, today it gives me great joy also to honor another stellar organization that has made a commitment to strengthening the communities of Los Angeles, and to be with a dynamic Executive Director and one of the great columns of strength of the foundation that is Los Angeles, the president of the Canaan Group, who wears many hats, you may recognize him from the Second Baptist Church, Reverend William Epps. We are honoring the Canaan Group here, which just had its dinner last week, which I was very pleased to play a small part at, because the Canaan Group, which was founded in 1990, has spent the last two decades working to improve the lives of those that live, work, and play throughout the city. But from their name, which in the Bible we know is the land that was given to the people of Israel, who would later become the Israelites, but the Canaanites and Canaan is the promise that God gave to all people to be able to take this land that was going to be the promised land, and to make something of it. And certainly here in Los Angeles, this beautiful land that we have been given, the Canaan Group has embodied that mission here around us, making sure that there is hope for the hopeless, that there is room for those who have often been pushed away from the table, and that the voices that we do not hear are heard and are cared for and nurtured. From the start, their affiliation with the Second Baptist Church, and Ms. Perry, I know, had to attend a funeral, but very much wanted to be a co-presenter this morning, and is here with us in spirit, where the Second Baptist Church is in the 9th District. Their affiliation with the Second Baptist Church has fueled their work in the community. Their work and their accomplishments also reflect the work and the causes that many around this horseshoe champion. Their work has built more than 350 units of affordable housing for low-to-moderate families to date, and we know certainly, in the midst of the crisis that we face, unprecedented since the Great Depression, that housing has never been a more fundamental or important right for Angelenos. Their financial literacy programs have serviced hundreds of households at risk of foreclosure, helping them to find a responsible way to finance and to keep their homes. And their workforce programs have placed 56 people in steady, good-paying, living-wage jobs, and providing counseling services to thousands upon thousands of people each year. It isn't just about the walls they build, it is about how they fill them in with community. So from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund to the healthcare career ladders, we see in Canaan a partner from the nonprofit and religious community that seeks to accomplish what we hope to provide for every family that calls Los Angeles home. Their partnership provides a strong foundation for building the future of our city, and colleagues, I ask you to join me in honoring the Canaan Group and their contributions to Los Angeles. And now we'll hear from a man who I always enjoy listening to, Reverend William Epps, who's president of the Canaan Group's Board of Directors and pastor of the Second Baptist Church. Please welcome him.
City Council, thank you for this signal. Honor, we're just doing what we need to do in order to improve the
Honor, we're just doing what we need to do in order to improve the quality of life for the citizens of specifically South Central Los Angeles. Our goal at Canaan is nothing more than building and developing sustainable communities today for lasting tomorrow, and it's all done under the capable leadership of our executive director, Norman Bullock.
Thank you, President Garcetti and members of the council for this great honor. We want to continue to be able to pursue our mission of providing vulnerable neighborhoods with sustainable, affordable housing, coupled with our programs that we offer to sustain that with financial literacy education and workforce development. We see a great partnership between Canaan, the Second Baptist Church, and the city of L.A. in continuing to provide those vulnerable neighborhoods with those services of housing, jobs, and access to economic development. So we receive this honor with great humility, and we also commit ourselves, recommit ourselves to continuing to work in public-private partnerships to be able to help our people to gain those accesses to housing, to jobs, and to economic development. Thank you again for this honor.
And so it would be honored to congratulate the Canaan Group on their annual fundraiser this past week, but also the great continuing work, I know, around this horseshoe. You have many, many friends, and we look forward to many more units of housing, many more jobs in the community, a much more financial literacy throughout Los Angeles, and fulfilling the mission that brings us all here together today. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti, and thank you, Reverend Epps. Congratulations to you and to Canaan Housing. We're so happy to have you here, and you didn't mention, Eric, that you received an honor and award from them just a week or so ago, so we congratulate you as well.
He received our public service award that we presented at our dinner.
Very well deserved, so thank you very, very much. Mr. Labonge for our next presentation, actually, our last presentation today.
Reverend Epps. Take care, Reverend. All right. Good. Shelley, you all right? Ready? Okay, good. Anne, ready? Anne, ready? I know. Madam President, members of the council, as we conclude our recognition of very special people in this city of Los Angeles this week, there's an organization that I would like to salute here, the Greek Heritage Society of Southern California, which was established in 1885 to preserve the rich heritage and traditions of the Greek immigrants to Southern California. And behind me are some of the Greeks, so let's give them a big welcome to Los Angeles, City Hall. In association with the Loyola Marymount University, the Greek Heritage Society sponsors and produces exhibits, stages productions, and also showcases that preserves the artistic, academic, professional, and athletic accomplishments of our local Greek community. The database has over 500 special interviews with Greek Americans who've immigrated here and made their life in Southern California. This documentary features the struggles and successes of the first Greeks that immigrated to Southern California in two different segments of this production, of this very special production. This documentary currently is in post-production, which we look forward to seeing, and I wanted to bring them all together here to have a little high-five, so to speak, as we come around the bend and try to finish off what is going to be a tremendous review of Greek heritage in Southern California. I know one of my mentors, we know, speaker of the mouth, John Farrow's best friend, was Ernie Zafres. Ernie Zafres, as you may know, was the melon king here in Los Angeles, was providing all the produce to the communities here in this city, and there's many, many more that we want to highlight in this efforts here. I thought it was important to bring you all together here to give you this very special commendation and also to help you to reach out to those who may be so inclined to help sponsor this production in its completion. So on behalf of the City Council of Los Angeles, on behalf of my colleague, Mr. Ed Reyes, where St. Sophia's is his great home, and Father John, and on behalf of our mayor, Antonio Birogosa, we salute the Greek Heritage Society of Southern California.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Shelley, I know sometimes they call me Labonge, Labing, Zion calls me all kinds of names. I'm not going to try as much as I want to, Shelley, but help me right here to say this correctly here. Shelley?
Papadopoulos.
Papadopoulos. Please welcome Shelley Papadopoulos. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, Council President Garcetti, Madam President, Council Member Labonge, and other council members. My name is Shelley Papadopoulos, and I am fundraising chair for the Greek Heritage Society of Southern California. The Greek Heritage Society was established in 1985, although I really like 1885, I like that better, but no, we've only been around since 1985, to preserve the rich culture, heritage, and traditions of Greek immigrants in Southern California through exhibits, oral histories, and stage productions. Concurrently, we have amassed a database of over 500 interviews of Greek immigrants and Greek Americans in Southern California. We have produced Part One of a documentary series, The Pioneers, 1900 to 1943, and we are currently in post-production with Part Two, The Promise of Tomorrow, 1943 to 2008. Our documentary series is part of our oral history project, which will provide an archive and extensive database for research, cultural awareness, and cross-cultural studies. Now I'd like to introduce Anna Giannotis, the writer and director of our documentary.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam President, council members, and our good friend, Councilwoman Labonge. You will be reviewing a segment from our 90-minute feature documentary, The Promise of Tomorrow. You'll see how an ancient Greek tradition has been woven into the American fabric and celebrated throughout the world. We'll see how challenging it can be to maintain certain customs in the 21st century.
Let's roll.
And through the Olympic Games, there's peace and unity because there is unity through diversity. And when you see Americans, you see Americans of various ethnic backgrounds, religious beliefs, colors, and cultures. When you see Greeks, you see the same thing.
And so, as you can imagine, we were a little embarrassed to put on these curly skirts. Looked like I had a bad case of varicose.
Yes, I did wear a fustinella.
I was like 10 or 12 years old, and I had a little pot, and I had a fustinella on.
And I'm thin, so my skirt looked especially big on me. In fact, they had to take 50 fleets out so it would look decent.
It was a traumatic day for me. I jumped out of the car, and my fustinella fell to the ground.
That's probably the shortest ebb zone you ever saw in your life.
Some of the people that were our age would tease us, you know, but we were, we stood firm. Some of the guys in the group were big guys, and they let them have it. They tell you, hey, this is our cultural palace, this is what we do.
That was the last time I'm gonna wear a fustinella, you know.
And you stood on the stage, and you recited in Greek.
Right after I said that poem with my fustinella, and everybody's crying, 600 people in that hall from the church crying, I said, boy, this is powerful. I can do a lot of stuff with this.
But it made my mom and dad happy.
We need to keep Greece alive in, in all things Greek, alive in our children and our children's children, to carry on that flame, because it is a fervor, you know, it's a flame, that passion about being Greek, and we need to continue that.
This project has solely been supported through the private donations of the Greek-American community, and we're so grateful to them. To date, we've applied for many grants, and we have not received any. We continue to seek funding and sponsorship. If you'd like to help us, please visit our website, pahh.com/ghs, or email us at greekheritage@hotmail.com. That's greekheritage@hotmail.com. We'd really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, I also want, if you would, Shelley, to introduce some very special people, but I want to say right here that we have here, Mr. Zion, I know you're out of the room, but you know whose mother this is? Come on, Mr. Zion, you know everybody, everybody. He's the hardest-working KFWB field reporter. Pete, Bill Cooper, Bill Cooper worked City Hall, Pete Demetrius' mom. Yeah, never, everybody loves him. Babe Demetrius, okay? And also, you'll never be on the radio again, Mr. Zion, I'm sorry. This is the Greek Heritage Society. I don't think Bill Cooper is Greek. God bless Bill Cooper. But God bless Pete Demetrius and all the Greeks here. We want to help you any way we can. What is great about Los Angeles, just like these students here from Sunland, is our diversity, and I'm just excited about everything. And the highest-ranking Armenian-American and the legislative analyst, Avak Italian, he was born in Athens, Greece, right there, so he has a little character there, right there. So thank you very much, members, and appreciate all the support we can give to this great documentary, which is under production. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labonge. Madam Clerk, next item?
Next is item number one, and that was called "Special" for a card.
Thank you, the card, Mr. Arnold Sacks on item number one. Mr. Sacks.
Thanks.
Mr. Sacks, did you decide not to speak on this item?
Oh, we're on the item count. I want to talk to you before number four.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Sacks, we're ready.
Sorry about that. Thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. Very quickly, this is regarding a lien against property located at 540 North Collado Street. I'm just curious if the City Council, the Department of Building and Safety, can use the lien, the lien system against illegal billboards that are located throughout L.A. Is that possible, to enact a lien against billboards? Nothing's been done. There's over 600 illegal billboards throughout the city, and if you can consider private property and establish a lien against private property, I don't see why this Department of Building and Safety can't impose liens on these illegal billboards and get them removed and have something done, because evidently, the City Council's not going to do anything about it. Thank you for your time and your answers.
Thank you very much. That closes public comment on item number one. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Madam President, just for clarification, item number one is the recommendation by Building and Safety is to receive and file it inasmuch as payment was received on this.
That will be received and filed. We go back to public comment. Mr. Zumadog, followed by Arnold Sacks, followed by Sharon Brewer. Mr. Zumadog, this is public comment.
Yes, is it two minutes on the clock? Is it, is it two minutes on the clock? Thank you. Yes, as we know, I'll put my notes down, we've discussed the fact that we, the state and city, has a serious financial crisis ahead. With oil at $135 a barrel, we're going to have hyperinflation, with gas rising, people, food will cost more to raise and to deliver, along with all hard items delivered to stores. We're going to see, people won't have money left over for things like mortgages and car payments, or to go to Disneyland, or to drive to Vegas. You're going to see moms and pops closing, you're going to see a lot of institutions cave in. We're under attack from the oil-producing nations who are driving up the price of oil, so we have no money. Crash the financial institutions, then they buy them at pennies at the dollar. So what I'm about to say is where some people, I could easily avoid this topic, but there's something I saw come through the referral agenda regarding financial aid for college of non-documented people in the state. I understand the fact that we need to help, you know, there's the compassionate approach that, gee, don't punish illegal immigrant children because their parents are here illegally. Well, they're born here, and so they shouldn't be punished or held back because of their parents. These kids are born innocent, and they should have just as much of a shot. I understand that. But to say that the U.S. government needs to ensure that all kids go to college, well, that's what I need to say, under these financial hard times, this is no time to be giving financial aid for college and universities of non-documented. And let these people have the last laugh in society. Get vocations at LAUSD. Learn a vocation. There's nothing wrong with making $100,000 as a plumber, as a truck driver, as an electrician. These are jobs as a contractor, as a supervisor. These are jobs that cannot be imported or exported. So finally, if I could just summarize, although I do support financial aid, this is no time under these hardship crisis circumstances. Thank you.
Arnold Sacks is our next speaker. After that, we'll go to Van Nuys, and Sharon Brewer will be our next public commenter. Good morning, Mr. Sacks.
Good morning, Mr. President. Good thing I looked up. I thought your voice got deeper. Yes, I'd like to discuss something that's going to occur on Monday and related to Mr. Zumadog's comments regarding a crisis that the city is facing. On Monday, you're going to consider a ordinance related to sale of surplus property located at 8101 South Vermont Avenue. The property is being sold for $1,050,000. According to part of the agenda item, the city's expenditure towards acquisition and improvement cost was for $1,514,781. So the city is losing $464,000 selling this property to the Community Coalition for Substance Abuse Prevention and Treatment. I have no problem actually selling it to a nonprofit, but in today's agenda, the city is selling property to the CRA. The CRA is going to turn around and sell that property to a third party. Why is the city not selling it itself to the third party? Why is the city, is the city getting the proper equity from the property that it's selling to the CRA? Is it city selling it at a, damn, a good price? Is it getting the, getting the best price from it, or is it selling it to the CRA at a fire sale, and the CRA is going to make the profit off of it? I'd also like to point out that on last Wednesday, you had some agenda items regarding information with the related company. And again, it is not the related company that is building the Grand Avenue project, it is the related cause, COS, or Related California. And it was pointed out that the city wasn't losing any funding unless the project is not completely developed, but it is losing funding. It gave up tax incentives, and it lost a court hearing case that was established by the Bonaventure Hotel that dealt with the CRA's density program. The city lost funding on both those, both those parts of the program. Thank you for your time and letting me speak a little over.
Thank you. Sharon Brewer is our next speaker.
Sharon Brewer, public comment, Daily News, May 20, 2008, front page. Some services win, others lose as city budget approved. Shortfall, restored funds muted by job cuts, fee hikes. L.A. City Council approves, approved $7 billion budget Monday that restores funding for library sidewalk repair and other favored community services, but still cuts hundreds of city jobs and raises fees for parking and trash pickup. City budget balanced, assuming tax revenues won't fall further, fee increases will be implemented on time, and city employee unions will sign off on temporary layoffs, the unpaid six furlough days. CLA office found $97 million in extra money just last week. Question, how could there be $97 million in extra money that no one knew about until last week? The windfall comes from higher-than-expected fee revenues. Question, fee revenues from where? Plus $28 million from a tentative lawsuit settlement, and $38 million from anticipated sale of city property. How can you use any money with words like tentative or anticipated attached to the dollar amount when balancing the city budget? Plus, when is this tentative or anticipated $66 million supposed to be deposited into the general fund? City Council, what happened to reports on city costs for use of city vehicles versus use of personal vehicles, savings of insurance, maintenance, et cetera? Home garage city vehicles, according to an employee in the CAO's office, home garage vehicles must be in L.A. city limits. Special event fee waivers, actual costs with breakdown by departments involved, convention fee waivers, total costs, overtime salaries. City council members, to balance a budget, the figure used must be identified, documented. You should not guess on receipts or expenses to balance the city's budget. So I think you should still be looking at ways to save the money and not depend on this $97 million windfall. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Brewer. That closes our general public comment. We've had a request to take item 16 out of order, if there's no objection. Take item 16 next, and I believe Ms. Brewer wanted to. And I believe Ms. Gruehl wanted to take that up. Is Ms. Gruehl here? Why don't we hold that? Oh, Mr. Weisar called "special," sorry. I thought it was Ms. Gruehl. Mr. Weisar, item number 16?
Can we hold that on? Yeah, sure. It's Ms. Gruehl's motion.
Ms. Gruehl?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Colleagues, you have before us on item 16, an item that is in opposition to AB 212. And I'd like the Planning Department, Ms. Blumenfeld, if she would come to the table, as well as Jerry Miller. Colleagues, I want to make this very, very simple. If you may recall, we just had a big debate on SB 1818 implementation. If there was one thing that this council felt very strongly about, was that the state legislature should not determine local planning laws, that we should have local control. That is a common theme, and philosophically, I think you all believe that that is the case. AB 212 that is before you only applies to charter cities with a population of 2,000, excuse me, 2 million or more. This bill, and this state, is enacting a bill that only applies to the city of Los Angeles. This change was made March 4th, where it only applied to the city of Los Angeles. The state of California is now suggesting that they make land use decisions for the city of Los Angeles. We strongly believe that the city should make and decide each case that comes before us on a case-by-case basis. AB 212 would only apply when the zone change meets the following conditions: when the general plan designates the property for residential uses, it designates the property for residential uses has applied to the property for a minimum of 15 years. And you can read it, we sent, it is only two and a half, well, it's three pages, actually it's three pages, but if you look at all of the deletions, it's probably worth one page that is before us. But this document and this state legislation would change the way we do business here in the city of Los Angeles. I don't understand why it only applies to the city of Los Angeles. I don't understand how they have such specificity in here for a district, for a city, where we want to be able to have an influence. And Ms. Hahn, who has projects in her district, Mr. Weisar, Mr. Alacon, Mr. Cardenas, Mr. Smith, Mr. Weiss, Mr. Zine, all have projects where the zone and the general plan are inconsistent. The Planning Department is going through review of those community plans as we speak to make everything consistent to be able to do that. In some instances, maybe the general plan has changed. In some instances, maybe the zoning has changed. But the bottom line is, it's about local control. And if we've heard anything from our communities, that is critically important. And let me tell you how we heard about this bill. We heard about this bill, I know Ms. Blumenfeld will can speak to that, is we got a call from the Legislative Analyst Office up in Sacramento, asking the city of Los Angeles why we were introducing this legislation and why it was important to us. That is the first we heard of it. First we heard of it. So not only, and I want to make this clear, we need to have a better, and I know this is not you, Jerry, we need to work with the mayor's office and others, to have a better signaling situation where we know that these things are happening in the state of California. Because for legislation to be introduced that says they are going to have this effect only the city of Los Angeles raises enormous questions for the city. Now, I know, and my colleague and I had a chance to talk, Mr. Cardenas, and would like to potentially have this being sent to Rules Committee. Rules Committee does not meet next week. Now, this was being fast-tracked, it was supposed to be Wednesday before the Senate, and it's why we wanted this to move quickly. But I think it is critically important today to send a message, because we know, it's one and a half pages here, okay? We know what it means, and I'm going to ask Ms. Blumenfeld to tell us a little bit, and Jerry Miller, what this means. But it is very simple, and that's why I think we should vote on it today and send a message that the state should not determine local planning. Should not. And it has an urgency clause on here. Now, I don't know about you, but what it says is that the act is, and as Mr. Cardenas and I were talking, this is what, when it's actually voted on, but this act is an urgency statute necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, and safety as part of the Constitution. When is a planning and zoning issue that only impacts the city of Los Angeles an urgency clause that affects the public health and safety? Every day. So I think that we need to take a strong stand today and say that we do not believe that the state of California and the legislature should tell us how to do local planning in our communities and our neighborhoods. Don't let them do that to us. And so I'd like, I know I have a six minutes because I'm the first maker of, maker of the motion, but I'd like to ask both Ms. Blumenfeld or Jer, I don't know which one of you wants to go first, to please explain to the rest of this council and to the public what this legislation would do, how it would impact the city of Los Angeles, and hold my time.
You want to go first on the substance issue? Thank you.
Jane Blumenfeld from the Planning Department. Substantively, from a planning point of view, I guess Councilmember Gruehl is pretty accurate on this, it would essentially eviscerate the mayor and council's actions on planning and zoning. If you make a change, as you frequently do with motions, pretty much on daily basis here, for something to change, a plan to change, a zone to change in any one of your districts, this law would require the city to act on a zone change application under the rules of a previous idea, previous plan, previous zone. So essentially, it would negate the changes that the mayor and the council would have made over some unknown time period. So if a zone change is filed, and maybe years go by, we would be required, the city would be required to act on that zone change pursuant to the rules that were in place, maybe some council members ago, some years ago, some rules ago. So that's what it does.
Very simple, which I said, yes, Ms.
Well, and as a matter of course, I can't imagine a situation in which I would not recommend that you oppose a bill that would essentially have the state usurp local control on planning issues. I think that's one of the key issues that this council and the mayor need to have control over. We became aware of this bill, I believe, last Thursday or Friday, and you are correct, at least at this point, there is no other charter city in the state of California to which this bill would apply. So it is clearly directed directly towards the city of L.A.
Thank you. And I know that in the past, and this was as they, when it was going to impact the entire state of California, there was opposition by the California State Association of Counties, the League of California Cities, the American Planning Association, and the Regional Council of Rural Counties, all of which stated that they did not believe that this should be impacting local government and that we should keep that control. So colleagues, I could go on and on about this and how I think this bill is outrageous from the perspective of the city council taking away that authority. And then the point being that we could continue to next week, or we could have a Rules Committee, but the facts don't change. The facts today say, and that's why I want us to vote today, because anything different, I'm telling you, neighborhood councils are listening, you're going to go, well, why wouldn't they just say no today? Why do they need another week to say no? Why do they need that? Because it's taken away our authority. And let me tell you, they will know, if we do that, that the city council does not believe, and that there's a question in our minds as to whether or not, and homeowners group and others, that we should have the state decide, just like SB 1818 should decide for the city of Los Angeles.
I did want to add very quickly, this is on a fast track. It's scheduled for the Senate Local Government Committee on the Fourth of June, so that's in, what, about 10 days, so.
So colleagues, I would ask you, and with all due respect to my colleague, Tony Cardenas and others, that we vote on this today to send a clear message that because it is so simple, the state should not determine our destiny or our fate about what happens in our neighborhoods. Let's vote today, let's send a message, so that any other potential ideas that will come up, because this was a, this has been amended and started since July 17th of 2000 as a budget committee item, and has now been moved into this. As we all know, they do trailer bills and different things, and we have, you know, elected officials here who were part of the state legislature. That's what happened, and they put these items in. Let's put the light of day and transparency and say no. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cardenas, then Mr. Labange, Mr. Weisar, Ms. Hahn, Mr. Zine.
Thank you very much. Oops, light of day and transparency. You stole my line, Stacy. Wendy, I'm sorry. Looking at my notes. Wendy. Hold on a second. Eviscerate? You used the word eviscerate. It's kind of dramatic, but, so let's clarify, I wasn't going to go through the details because I want this to go through the committee process and then discuss it on the floor next week. But let's just, I would like to get through that eviscerate point you made. Doesn't this bill, wouldn't this bill require us to apply the process differently than we do today with more expediency? But it wouldn't require the city to approve a zone change, right?
It doesn't require the city to approve a zone change, but it does require the city to consider it in the context of old rules. So in other words, if you've now changed an area in your district to some other, you would have to now consider it under the old ideas.
Yes, but consider it. And through the process of that consideration, and public comment and all that other stuff, and, you know, people wanting to burn down City Hall and saying, don't you dare approve the zone change, we could actually say, no, we don't approve the zone change.
Well, except for, aside from those, that input you mentioned, there are legal findings. There are legal findings. And when there are legal findings, and there is a zone and a plan from an old time, they carry some legal weight, and you may not be able to say no the same way as you would be able to say no to a new plan and a new idea. That's why I said eviscerate.
So actually, when we have something in place and somebody is a property owner, they may, I guess correctly, make assumptions that based on that general plan, they should have certain rights and responsibilities to take place on their land. But what this bill would require is that we go ahead and adhere the plan that the city approved previously, and then go through the process as such, correct?
Based on the old rules, yes.
Based on the, but the thing is, the property owners aren't the ones that put the general plan in, the city does, right? A property owner doesn't create their own general plan, correct? The city does.
Right.
So if the city doesn't get around to fixing the old one or what have you, or updating it, that's really the city's responsibility, not the property owner. Correct?
Yes.
Okay. I liken it like, you know, driving down the street, if it says, don't go above 55 or 35 miles an hour, and you do, then you broke the rules. But if it says stay below 35 miles an hour, then nobody should be expected to be pulled over because they're playing by the rules, right?
But it would sort of be if they changed the speed limit to 30, now somebody would be allowed to go 55 because some years back, we thought 55 was okay.
No, the person had properly noticed, if we changed the rules, then we'd have to put a sign out there saying, don't go above 30. Then if they go above 30, then they broke the rules.
Except for this law would.
Except for this law?
This law would do it differently.
My time, please, explain that.
Because this law would say you have to consider that speeding car under the old rules, even though you've changed them now, to use your analogy.
So this law would not allow us to change the general plan, is what you're saying?
It would allow you to change the general plan, but it would require the cities to consider applications under previous rules and previous plans and zones.
So what you're saying is, in our analogy, if somebody's driving down the street and the sign says, don't go above 35, but the city is in the process of changing it to 30, we should apply the 30 mile an hour rule?
If the city had changed it, the person could go under the old rules.
Anyway, it's too bad the people watching probably don't, aren't following what we're saying too well. But anyway, getting down to this thing, the fact of the matter is, there seemed to be an urgency when it was assumed by the city of Los Angeles that this bill was going to be heard as soon as next week. But this bill, I just got off the phone with the author of the bill, Assemblyman Fuentes, who represents part of the city of Los Angeles, and he clarified that the bill is not before a Senate committee until two Wednesdays from now. So my motion would be, for purposes of transparency, for us to have it go through a committee here, so the public can testify, and the council members on those committees can actually do their due diligence. My motion is that we move it to committee. Hopefully, the council president maybe can have a, what is it, Rules would be the automatic place it would go to. Perhaps as early as next Tuesday, maybe a joint committee of the Plum and Rules, and we can see it on the council floor with a placeholder as soon as next Wednesday. So my motion is to move it to committee instead of voting. We will vote on today. It's either going to be a vote on my motion, successful or not, and then a vote of Wendy's proposal to bring it before the council today. So I agree with Wendy, we should vote on it today, but my point is, we should vote to send it to committee and then vote on it once and for all next week.
Thank you. Mr., is there a second? Okay, Mr. Labange.
Ms. Blumenfeld, where are you on this issue?
I think the bill is not, is, does it a service to planning for sure, because we want to have the latest.
It's a bad bill.
Bad bill for planning.
Right. We're on the same side on this issue.
It's amazing, isn't it?
Right, huh? That's good. And Jerry, you feel the same way?
Well, from the standpoint of local authority and local control, I would recommend opposing the bill, yes.
I think it's absolutely important, and I think one of our challenges in government, whether it's the federal government, state, county, or city, is how they sometimes interact each other and at one point try to reach out and try to solve a problem, yet it's based on local zoning, which is so important. Just a historic perspective, Jane. AB 283, Assemblyman Vincent Thomas wrote that bill. Do you know its history?
A little bit, yes.
And was that a positive for the city?
I think, yes, that was positive.
But it was a very costly effort for our city. We had our plans and our, didn't affect our zoning. The zoning didn't affect, the zoning on various parcels reflected one thing, and the plans reflected another. And basically, it put it together, and it was probably a 10-year period. And it started in the early 80s, if I have my memory correct. But that was a citywide benefit to everybody, and I believe then Assemblyman Vincent Thomas was concerned about overdevelopment in the charming San Pedro District that is under the great leadership of Ms. Hahn now, and wrote that, that affected cities over a certain million population. And I think when he wrote it, I think Los Angeles was the only million-plus city at the time when it was some 20, 30 years ago. But this is a particular bill that probably takes out the ability for the local representative to listen to the people, to make the right decisions, to work with the city planning department, which is on the fifth and sixth floor, that is organizing to be a better community-based department. So I would say vote for the resolution that votes to not support this assembly bill that's there. Correct? Mr. Miller, that's what I want to do. I want to support local control.
Yeah, the motion before you would be to oppose the bill, yeah.
Good, thank you. I ask all members to vote to keep local control and vote no on this assembly bill, 1212. Keep 1212. It's not 1212, 212 in New York, not here.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Weisar?
Thank you very much. It's very clear that this is bad public policy for the city of Los Angeles. Many times, a state attempts to regulate local land use policies, but at a general level, at a macro level. This is very particular and specific about when can or cannot we change zones. And that, I think any city in California would be opposed to, we certainly should, particularly when it's targeting the city of Los Angeles. So sitting on Plum, I could see and envision many instances where council members are going to feel frustrated, because now, when they're looking and planning their own communities and working to develop the vision of that community, where now we're going to be handheld or restricted from our ability to make those changes if we so wish. So I think this is bad public policy, we should oppose it. Now, the question I have, though, is, we also have processes that we hope to respect and adhere to, whether something is of urgency or not. Originally, we thought it was urgent because it was for June 2nd, correct? Or June 4th, they were going to vote on it. The Assembly's going to vote on June 4th?
The committee is scheduled for June 4th now, yes.
Sure, Senate committees, and Rules meets next week?
There's a Rules meeting next week, correct?
Rules meeting next week. So I get the sense.
There's also a Plum committee meeting next week, I think.
Yeah, I get the sense that when we look at the details and council members truly understand the impact of this bill, we would most likely not like what we see. But at the same time, I think we should vet it, discuss it if it's not of urgency, and move forward. So either way, I think we should move forward on whatever process we have here, but at the same time, I would urge us to oppose this bill as this motion states, because we certainly don't want to restrict our ability to create the type of neighborhoods that we think is in the best interest of Los Angeles and not in the best interest of Sacramento. Thank you.
Ms. Hahn?
Thank you, Mr. President. Okay, let me get this straight. This bill would basically tell us that we could not deny a zone change application under certain conditions, one of which was a general plan was so many years old. I don't think it's exactly. Hold my time.
It doesn't say you can't deny, but it does say you have to consider it under different rules, which would tie your hands as to the flexibility to approve or deny something. In other words, if you've changed a zone, let's just say you've changed the zone and the plan to some lower-density designation, and it used to be a lot higher, and somebody applies for something then, in the, under the new rules, you'd have to consider it under the old rules. to consider it under the old rules. And as far as findings, when it says, "Does it conform to the plan?" You'd have to look at the old plan, you'd say, "Well, yes, it does." So, it doesn't require you to approve, but it does set the rules up differently so that your options are fewer.
All right. Well, hearing that, it's still, I think it's been expressed pretty loud and clear, it certainly changes our influence and our ability to make decisions on land use issues within our jurisdiction in Los Angeles.
Yes.
Yes. And, you know, I'll say it again, I had real problems with 1818. I had real problems with our enabling ordinance for 1818, and I said that loud and clear. So, it's very consistent for me that I would be against this bill as well. Again, density, overdevelopment, you know, developers coming in, buying up, you know, property, asking for zone changes to increase density is happening all the time. And I think our constituents are feeling it in terms of traffic and quality of life that they no longer experience. So, in Vince Thomas's honor and memory today, who did that for San Pedro, he didn't want San Pedro to be overdeveloped, and I'm fighting a lot of development issues in San Pedro as well today. So, I think we need to send the message today. I think this is a bad bill for Los Angeles. I think our constituents would say the same thing, that this is bad. And I think we ought to say it today because it gives, even though it's not going to be heard for a couple of weeks, it gives our legislative folks up in Sacramento opportunity to organize, to begin putting the pressure on the different members of this committee to oppose it. So, just because it's not going to be heard for two weeks doesn't mean we can't get our troops up in Sacramento going, you know, full power to oppose this bill. So, I would vote to take this opposition today and send our message loud and clear. It's a bad bill for Los Angeles, period.
Mr. Zine.
Legislature has a bill authored by a representative from the city of Los Angeles. Have we asked why, why this proposal's being made? This isn't being made by a representative from San Diego or some other part of the state, this is made by a representative from the San Fernando Valley, a local legislator. Have we asked, because I heard about this yesterday, and many of us heard about it yesterday or today, so clearly, the train's rolling down the track quickly, and we want to digest and find out the particulars, what is the reason? Has anyone asked why this is being proposed by a local legislator? I want to know the answer, Wendy.
We have not, we've not had the opportunity to do a report on this yet. My staff has been talking to the mayor's office and Mr. Fuentes's office to really understand the basis behind the bill, but at that, at this point, we don't have a specific answer on that.
So, my concern is, if we want to be open and transparent and find out what the purpose of this is, what is the reason for this? I understand there's a parcel in my district that's going to be affected by this. I don't know how many parcels citywide are affected by this. I don't want the state to take over our authority in land use. The state asserts its jurisdiction many, many times, they mandate programs without funding, so I'm not in favor of those things. So, I'm not saying that this is good. What I'm asking is, why is this necessary? Why is this happening? And how do we find that out, other than having a hearing and getting someone from that legislative office to explain the purpose and legitimacy for this? If not the case, then we say, "No, thank you." But somehow, with the urgency and with rushing it through, the question is, what's the purpose and why? Until we answer those questions, why are we going to say yes or no? And why can't we have a process to determine the answers for those questions and let the chips fall where they may? Is it legit? Is it not legit? You have a state legislator that puts forth a bill, it gets approved, it's going through the process, it seems logical, we'd want to get some answers before we take a position. The way we get answers is by having people come down and testify, whether it's here in council or in a committee. So, I'm not opposing the committee hearing, I don't want to see it ram through, but if we vote today, say no, thank you very much, we never know the reason. Let's find out the reason and not hamper our ability to ultimately say no to this or to have it amended and modified. That's the issue. No one can answer why this is being proposed. All of a sudden, we have an urgency, we have something that we found out yesterday, it's here on the table today.
One answer to your question may be the following. When I talked to the Senate Rules Committee or the staff person writing the analysis of the bill...
This was authored by, did it pass the legislature yet?
Pardon me?
Is it passed the state legislature?
No.
You say the Senate, it's a legislative bill.
It's in the Senate now, scheduled for a Senate committee hearing.
Did it go through the legislature first?
The Assembly, it went through the Assembly.
The Assembly, did it pass Assembly?
Yes, it did.
Okay, it passed Assembly, so local legislators supported it, and now it's in the Senate?
Apparently, yes.
So, somehow, whatever hearing was done, and I don't know if we were a part of that hearing...
I think maybe it was a different bill at the time.
Pardon me?
It was a different bill at the time, I believe, than it is now.
Okay. And when was it modified, when was it modified to this?
It's been modified...
The current?
Four times, so it was modified May 6th.
May 6th.
So, May 6th, it was modified to the current version?
I believe so.
Okay.
But when I talked to the staff of the Assembly, of the Senate writing the bill analysis, he was unaware that in the city of Los Angeles, we have a code, we have a process in our code that the council has adopted in the past that's called a vesting zone change provision, which is exactly what this bill does. It allows an applicant to file a zone change and lock in the rules at the time, which is exactly what this bill does. So, one answer to your question may be that they were unaware, as he was, that we have this process in the city of Los Angeles.
So, maybe the legislator who's proposing this, once he's informed...
Perhaps.
That this is already taken care of, will withdraw that bill, and we can put the matter to rest.
Perhaps.
Well, I'm just trying to say, if we have a hearing, we can expose all this, if we don't, then we're going to go blind down the path to say no, and there may be some legitimacy as to why it was done. Mr. Miller, do you have any comment on that, other than a smile?
Thank you, Mr. Zine.
You look perplexed.
No, sir.
So, he has no comments. Thank you, Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. Labange.
Mr. Alacon.
I find this discussion, this whole circumstance, interesting. The Assembly member who used to be a chief of staff for this council district, I think is very well aware of the process of planning in the city of Los Angeles, and so I am curious also, what is the impetus for this bill? And I also find curious that we are saying, "We have to act immediately without full vetting," because they acted immediately without full vetting and making this an urgency bill, which is kind of curious. I think we lose an opportunity by sending this forward immediately to find out what happened here. I'd like to know why this bill got through the Assembly and we were not notified. I'd like to know why, why nobody knew this thing was in process. I'd like to know why planning, why we change the rules after somebody buys a property, puts it in ESCO, and then is trying to develop it, and they can hold on to an application for forever, right, Jane? There's no cap on that. I mean, 10 years down the road, they finally decide to submit, and then they're wondering why the rules changed? Well, it seems to me it would be, there's two ways to work with the legislature. You can slam them, or you can try to work with them and see what is going on. I remember Tom Hayden, who voted no more than any other legislator during my time, always told me, "I always want to vote for your bill," and he would always work toward a positive end. Well, it doesn't seem to provide that kind of opportunity to build a positive relationship when you don't even review the bill in committee. So, it's not as if we didn't have time to know this. This bill was introduced in the Assembly, it got through a committee in the Assembly, maybe two committees, it went through rules at least, so it went through at least two committees, and then it went to the floor of the Assembly, then it moved over to the Senate. So, why did we not have time to understand that this bill was moving through? I want to know, I want to know those questions. I also want to say that as a former legislator, you know, the message that you send isn't going to get, it's not like they're going to wire us and we're going to, "Oh, oh, the city of LA opposed this bill today," and what are we going to... No, we don't even know who opposed the bill until it's presented, essentially, like the day before sometimes, we'll say, "Well, who opposed that bill because I'm going into committee to review it?" It's just like we do here. We're not going to consider everybody who opposes the bill as a practical matter, they'll get the same message in committee when this goes before them, whether we take an opposed position today or whether we take an opposed position next week. I don't think it's going to matter. What will matter is that we will have an opportunity, if we send this to committee, to review it thoroughly, to understand what happened, to understand if there was a problem with our process, and also to see if there, if we can tweak this, to figure out a way to vote, to say, "Well, we may not, we oppose this, but we'll support it if you do this to it," or "We can, we can support it if you do this to it." I just think that to just ram this through, just like they rammed it through allegedly, is sending the wrong message. I can't, I can't support the bill in its current form. I can't support the bill in its current form, I want to make that very clear. But I do think that our planning committee ought to have the opportunity to review the bill, to see what happened, to find out why it took so long for us to get notification that this bill was moving through. We should have blocked it in the Assembly if we're going to block it at all, and I want to know why we didn't, but I think we ought to let the planning committee have a look at it, or whatever the appropriate committee is, I think planning should look at it at least. And then, and then if we vote no, vote no, but I have no problem with that because that's my position today, but I really think we ought to send it to committee, and I think that's the wiser choice, that's the most professional protocol approach, and I think it builds a better relationship with the legislature, who, legislator who is a city of Los Angeles legislator, and I'd hate to see another bill come down the pike without our full vetting.
Mr. Smith is our next speaker.
That was very timely because I want to answer some of those questions, and Jerry, I'll let Jerry answer it, but what is different between when you were here before and today is, at that time, the city of LA had an office in Sacramento run by the CLA. We had five to six people up there, the CLA, the city council had a committee called Government Relations, and we would then look at all bills in the legislature. We don't run that office anymore, the mayor does. We don't see any of those bills anymore, the mayor does. We don't have input anymore because we don't even have a committee anymore, the mayor does. And so, how did this slip by? It's up in the mayor's office, it's not in this council. We're the policymakers in the city, and the people, when they voted for that charter change, made a huge mistake because we're responsible for making policy decisions, not the mayor. And that's a tragic mistake that now we're paying for with these kind of things. You're in the legislature, you know those bills get gutted at the last minute, and a whole new language gets introduced that's not even germane to the original emotion, and it comes in sometimes literally at the last minute, in the last few days of a session. Things get totally gutted and changed, and we have nobody there representing the city council anymore. And that is a tragic mistake that we're now paying for, and so I'm going to support you, Wendy, because I think we got to start standing up and saying no. I think we need to tell the mayor, "Cut this out, include us in." The problem is, is the mayor's cut that office in half. If I'm not mistaken, there's only one or two people left in Sacramento representing the city, is that correct?
There is one city employee in Sacramento, and there are contracts with two other individuals who have, are not city employees, they're now contractors that are still doing lobbying for the city.
And that's the same in Washington that...
No, the Washington staff...
Is staff, but we also have contracts with an outside lobbying firm to represent the city.
We have always, yes, we have always had contractors as well as city staff in...
Okay, I just think, the point is, folks, we've lost control of our own destiny on these issues. If we want to let this continue to go on, that's our mistake, but I think we ought to have a discussion on the policy concepts. I'm glad you brought this forward because I wanted to highlight this, and I've kind of shut up for a long time, but I think this has brought it all forward. We need to take another look as a council on how we're going to resolve these issues with Sacramento, and we can't wait for the mayor to do it for us because he doesn't represent this body. He represents the city as a whole and his own interest. We represent the districts, we represent in the interest of the people when it comes to making policy. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Gruehl.
Thank you, and I want to close just to respond to a few of the comments that were made, and thank you, Mr. Smith. Just ask the planning department, don't we have a process where there is transparency, public hearings, where we review zone change and general plan amendments? That any of these issues, any of these issues would be addressed? Hold my time.
Yes, yes.
Okay, sorry, I didn't have to hold the time for that answer. Yes, because it's a local decision. If you look at, colleagues, on the documents that we handed out from the League of Cities, it says, "The actual language in this bill is very confusing. It isn't clear what the specific problem is that the bill is attempting to address. In practice, this bill would cause ridiculous planning processes to occur. How more clearly can you state it?" Mr. Zine, when you said, "What's wrong with this picture?" I don't know what, I mean, who got, who did all of you get called by yesterday? Okay? So, it actually, it was passed by the Assembly before it was amended to specifically state the city of Los Angeles. That's why the Assembly passed it, because it wasn't specifically only to charter cities with greater than 2 million people. So, it changed. That's the reason today that we, now, no one called us March, let's see, the date that it was amended, if you look at it, May 6th, March 4th, August 29th, July 17th. If we're talking about transparency, no one called us to say this is going to impact the city of Los Angeles. Not one of us in this room got a call at that time. Secondly, you talk about legitimacy. There is no legitimacy for taking our rights away. So, today, let all the issues that were talked about, that Mr. Cardenas and Mr. Alacon asked and Mr. Weisar asked and others are legitimate questions about local planning and zoning issues, but it is not for the state of California or the state legislator to tell us what to do on planning issues in our neighborhood. So, no continuation to next week. Public hearing is going to change the fact that they should not be involved in planning issues in the city of Los Angeles, and particularly, this one bill that is going to impact every one of our districts in the future and not allow us to control our own destiny. Don't let this be continued. Send the message today that we believe in local control. Mr. Garcetti, so I would ask for a no vote on Mr. Cardenas's amendment to send it to committee and a yes vote on the item of force.
Okay. We have one public comment card on, we have one public comment card on this, Arnold Sachs, if you'd like to come forward. Why don't you submit another card if you'd like to also, Mr. Dog?
Sorry. Good afternoon, very quickly, I totally agree with Councilman Alacon. My concerns here are the fact that the city's out of the loop, and this legislation would have passed without, without somebody making a mistaken phone call, this would have gone right through and we'd have been out the door and left what the hell's going on with the state legislation. So, I think you need to review what's going on with getting messages from the state to LA because clearly, there's a big gap there in getting messages from LA to the state. We need to be on a page there. Again, like I say, without a, without a mistaken phone call, and we've had that happen before with somebody calling Chuck Tenen regarding a housing item, and you remember all the stuff that that brought up, this would have been, you'd have been looking at this in the rearview mirror. Thank you for your time and your answers.
Thank you, Mr. Sachs. My apologies, Mr. Dog, I had two piles handed to me, so, Mr. Dog on number 16.
Yes, yes, nothing could squelch my good mood. This is the item I've been waiting for. Hello, everybody, my name's Zuma Dog. I've been coming to city council for two years, and this is the best item I've ever seen, and here's why. This takes away power from city council. Special interests will no longer have to fuel their coffers and kiss their butuchas to get the way they want. Now it says, "If things make sense, it can be done on the spot." Oh, woo-hoo, no wonder Wendy's in such a hurry. She says it's so simple, it is simple. This, and this is hilarious because the state, first of all, the state does have jurisdiction over the city, it happens all the time. Secondly, this is basically saying, it's like taking the keys away from a bad teenager, the state's saying, "Hey, Los Angeles, you're darn right, it's specifically Los Angeles. You screwed up the region and state so bad, we have to make this totally, we have to make this resolution bill to take away power from you guys, you've screwed things up and we're sick of it." Ha-ha! So, anyway, Zuma Dog fully supports the great position of AB 212 Fuentes. Do they sell posters of Fuentes, whoever it is? Do you know this person? It's a great person, and I'd just like to say again, finally, here's something, the LA city council has screwed up the city, region, and state so badly, the state has to come in, take the keys away from the bad teenagers, and now the developers will no longer have to kiss their butts and donate money to the special interests for the zoning changes. They don't need City Council anymore after this. Now, of course, the big problem is that this will allow them to just drive density up the ying yang, and so I'll be complaining about that, but for right now, don't squelch my moment. City Council's about to lose a bunch of power. This is only a thing that opposes it. It's going through. Ha-ha.
Thank you for your passionate response, Mr. Dog. With that, we have one more speaker, Mr. Alikon, for a second time. We'll be sure to get you Mr. Fuentes's contact information.
This is not a new bill. This is an old bill from last year, and the amendment merely says that it applies to Los Angeles. And the amendment was made on the Senate side. In the Assembly, it always took the power away from, on the planning decision. So I still want an answer to the question, why, when this bill was introduced last year, with the policies essentially as stated, with the exception of excluding all other jurisdictions except for the City of Los Angeles, the bill remains the same. So I want to make it clear that there is a miscommunication here, but I would hate to accuse the legislature of expediting this under some urgency clause, trying to sneak it by us. We'll look dumb, quite frankly, when the bill was introduced last year. And then we're trying to ram it through without full consideration in committee over a two-week period. Now, who's trying to ram what through? And as you can see, Mr. Zuma Dog interprets it, you know, his own typical Zuma Dog way, and who knows, there may be, there may be two or three other Zuma Dogs out there in the public who might interpret it the same way. But the point I'm trying to make is, I think it would be prudent for us to send it back to committee just to understand what happened. I don't think there's a single vote for this resolution, against Wendy's resolution. But I think that the council deserves a better understanding of why this thing went awry.
Mr. Zine.
One more item that Mr. Smith brought up is, we have not heard from our folks in Sacramento as to why this somehow went through the process. If we send this to committee, we can have those folks explain why this wasn't caught, why this came to us at the 11th hour, why weren't they aware of what was occurring, to point the finger to say, "We need to know so we can respond," and not respond at the last minute. Again, I believe there is time, and if there wasn't time, I'd have a different position on this, but there is time for us to have that hearing, to ask those questions, and to make a resolution before it goes on the Senate floor for the next hearing and the approval or denial. So one more point, and having it sent to a committee, is we can have the Sacramento folks that are assigned to monitor this come down and testify as to how this slipped through. How many others have slipped through, and what watchdogs do we have up there to make sure that we're aware of changes that are taking place between the legislature and the Senate, and how it's going to impact us in this city? We don't have the answer to that question, we won't have the answer to that question unless we have a hearing. We need to have that, so that answer can come forward. Thank you.
Councilmember Wesson.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members. I really wasn't going to say anything.
Former speaker.
No, that has nothing to do with it, but the only thing that I don't understand, and maybe it's because no one has chatted with me about it, is if we're not going to support it, why not just do it now? I can tell you now, nothing is going to change my mind. I am not going to support this, period. But there are good, there's a legitimate concern where it relates to what happened. I don't understand how come we can't ask the question, "What happened?", and still support Wendy's motion? Now, is there, I know I'm new here, is there something, I mean, in order, in order for us to have this discussion as to how this slipped through the cracks, or why this occurred?
You could ask for a report back.
Do we have to have this motion? Do we have to have, I mean, do, Mr. CLA, help me out here.
Well, if you so choose, you could still support Ms. Gruel's motion to oppose the bill, and then direct my office and request the mayor's office to report on the process of this bill and other legislation as it moves through the state.
Then maybe what we should do, at the urging of Mr. Alikon and Mr. Zine, I don't have to do that, that we would then, the two of them would direct you and the mayor's office to come back and to answer all of the questions where it relates to the bill. Because I do agree with Richard on this, and I do agree with my phone ringing at the wrong time. And I do agree that this should not have slipped through the way that it did. And so there's a lot of truth to what Mr. Smith said, so I do think this deserves a discussion. So if Mr. Alikon and Mr. Zine wanted to do something like that, I would wholeheartedly support that. But for the rest of us, I think that we should just go on, support Ms. Gruel, and move this item, and take care of the rest of the city's business. That's just my suggestion. And I'm sorry, Mr. President, that I didn't turn off my telephone. Really wasn't my telephone. I was holding Zine's telephone.
We appreciate that clarification, for the record. We have Ms. Perry for the first time, Mr. Labange for a second, Ms. Gruel for a third, Mr. Zine for a third. Ms. Perry.
Just to clarify, Mr. President, can we vote on Ms. Gruel's motion today, and then ask for a report back on the other issues?
Absolutely, we can.
All right, can we call the question?
Yes, well, the question's been called. Is there an objection to that, Mr. Labange, Ms. Gruel, Mr. Zine?
Objection.
Oh, let's cut to the.
I'll second that. So will you have to vote on calling the question? Yes?
Clarification.
Yeah.
First.
Just clarification, is that we will be voting no on the 212, with the condition that the folks from the CLA in Sacramento, mayor's office, would testify either before committee or this body as to what occurred in this particular situation, and how we can prevent that from happening in the future.
So that's amending what I, my action.
Amend that, so if that's fine with you, Ms. Gruel? Okay, thank you, Mr. Garcetti.
All right, so there is an objection to calling the question. This is, Madam Clerk, is this an eight or a 10-person vote on the number of times everybody's spoken? I think Mr. Labange is on for a second time, so it'd still be a 10? Okay, it's a 10, okay, Mr. Labange takes his name off, so then we only have three people for a third time, so it's an eight-person vote on calling the question. This is just end debate. This is just a vote on ending debate, because there is an objection to ending debate. Please open the roll on calling the question, which is just on ending the debate. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
There's no longer an objection, so that could have gone on consent. So now we have, the first motion that has been made is to get a report back, I'm going to make it separate, because you can't bring up the original motion again, but a report back on basically what happened, and report back from our lobbyists in Sacramento and CLA's office on how this may have slipped through. That's the first thing that we're going to vote on. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
We will be getting a report back on that. Second vote is on Mr. Cardenas's motion, which is to send this to committee, Rules and Government Committee is where it would be. Sending it to committee, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Five ayes, eight noes.
That fails. Now we have Ms. Gruel's motion, original motion, before us. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Peace in our time. That passes. Thank you all. We're going to take up item number 10 out of order, without objection from Ms. Perry. Ms. Perry, we have cards in the public as well. Should I take that first, or do you want to speak first?
Thank you. This is a DWP contract that has never gone to the Energy and Environment Committee. Some issues have been raised with respect to full disclosure regarding the source of those contracts. If there is CAO staff and DWP staff here who can come to the table just for a second and tell us what the process is for approving these contracts, I'd like for them to come Just real quick, CAO and DWP, if you can tell us the process by which these contracts have made it to this point. And there's DWP, yeah. Real quick synopsis. Hold my time. Okay, who's going to speak first?
Yes, Phil Kanek with the CAO's office. The proposal that is in front of the council at the present time was, in fact, submitted for review to our office. We responded back to the mayor's office. It was then sent to the commission. The commission then forwarded it to the city council.
Did you ever have a chance or opportunity to review anybody's Form 700s and check on disclosure of the originator of the contracts, or principals involved in some of the companies? We have another one coming up next week. This is just the first one, Osmo's Fast Gateway. Have you ever had a chance to do that?
No, that was not.
Okay, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
No, that was not done.
Okay, that was not done?
No. It was not part of our normal process where we get that.
And after we go through this process, it may be that I'll make a motion to make that a part of the normal process, so that we can dig a little deeper and scratch the surface a little deeper on who originates these contracts, and if they subsequently become employees of departments, when does full disclosure occur in real time or on a quarterly basis, so that we, as council members, know the history of the contracts and what we're voting on. And as for DWP, can you tell me what the process is from your perspective?
The process was that in early '90s, this went through an RFP process for our outage management system. So we've been with that company for about 12, 15 years. They got out of this business. They brought this vendor in to do it as sole source. They were the only ones capable of providing this product, and henceforth, we've gone forward with this contract.
Okay. Members, I just want to say this to you, and I may be the only no vote on this today, because if we don't take action on this today, this is a time limit filing, it will be deemed approved. There are a body, a basket of contracts that are coming through that are currently under some kind of review, and I am not comfortable voting affirmatively on this contract today, because I need to know more about the history and the originator of the contract, and whether or not said individuals or a number of individuals are now in the employ of the Department of Water and Power, and when, if at all, these, this history was disclosed. It certainly did not go through committee. It may cause me, again, to ask for revision in the way that contracts are reviewed, so that we can dig a little deeper on Form 700s, 460s, things like that, that not only, you know, former employees, high-profile filers, those sorts of things, so that we understand what we're dealing with here. So I'm going to vote no on this today because of my concerns, and we have another one coming up next week, and if you feel the way that I do, I'm sufficiently uncomfortable with the history and issues being raised, that I feel that's the best action for me to take today. And so I leave it up to you, but I will be voting no. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Any other members wishing to be heard on this item? Yes, Mr. Labange.
Why should I vote yes for this if I don't want to vote no?
No, at this moment, our outage management system that's running our electric trouble system at LADWP is dependent on the data that comes from another system. Without this system, we're going to lose the ability to get crews out to these outages quick enough. We'll be sending multiple crews to what might be the same outage, and we won't be able to provide numbers on statistics on how many customers were actually out and the duration of those outages.
You know who Greg Mathis is?
Yes, I do.
Does he support this ever here?
Yes, he does.
Ms. Perry, I appreciate you as chair of this, but I just know on the recent outages, which were last weekend, the effectiveness of Water and Power was increased by 1,000% in trying to get to the problems and resolve it. And if that means this little component here helps that happen, there's a total change in what has happened in the past. In the older sectors of the city, which we share, they often have outages when there's any kind of disturbance, whether it's wind, whether it's heat, or something, water, which we don't have enough of coming from the sky. So you're telling me that this system is appropriate to help you get crews to where they should be?
It is critical at this time.
Good. With that being said, members, and how much is this contract?
It's 1.3 over a course of a seven-year.
And your commission has reviewed it?
Yes.
Right. I'm just saying, it's an important aspect of what they're trying to do, and they have changed it 1,000%. And I don't know if any of you have experienced it just recently, but whenever there's outages, our office is on the phone to your electric board or wherever we call, and we get quicker and more informed responses to this. So I would just, in all due respect, say I've got to stand with Water and Power.
Ms. Perry.
Yeah, this is not about standing up for the Department of Water and Power.
No, I'm not standing up for Water and Power, I'm about a contract.
No, that's not against it, it's about full disclosure of the origins of the contract. This is not a small component. I think we have approximately five more of these coming forward with the same source originating, and I felt it was critical enough to raise it to the body, because if there is proven to be failure to disclose, I certainly didn't want to take the entire body with me down a road that I certainly don't want to go down. And so it's not about the department, it's not about the service, it's not about that. This is really about full disclosure on Form 700s and the timeliness of this, when it took place, and that's really all it's about. And it may, again, as I say, alluded to earlier, cause a change in the way that we ask the departments to review contracts, so we can dig down even deeper. So, you know, you should vote your conscience and do whatever you need to do, but I needed to say this to the body, so that if there turns out to be surprises at the end of this process, I didn't want to be the one responsible for taking the body down a road that maybe we shouldn't go down. So I felt it was my obligation to share my concerns with you, and that's why I'm going to vote no. But obviously, people do what they need to do to feel comfortable, but we have to take an action today, because it is a time limit filing. Otherwise, it will be deemed approved automatically, and I wanted to put these issues on the record, because we have another one coming up next week, and from the same origins, and I believe we've got maybe approximately five of them coming up. So cumulatively, it's not a small component. Cumulatively, it's a significant component. So I'm going to vote no, and.
To clarify, Ms. Perry, are you announcing a no vote, or are you making a motion to reject?
I'm raising a motion.
Is it a motion? Are you asking, are you making a motion to reject the contract?
I would be willing to make that motion to reject if I can get a second. Otherwise, I'm just stating for the record, I'm going to vote no.
Is there a second to reject, Mr. Smith? Okay, so it is a motion that we'll be voting on, a yes vote on the motion is to reject, just to clarify that. We have one public speaker card, in the meantime. Zuma Dog, if you'd like to come forward on item number 10.
Yes, first of all, to address Councilmember Perry's concern over the origin, this is a proprietary software data. It's proprietary, so there would be no other company that could provide this service. So at that point, I'm not as concerned. However, here are some concerns. First of all, so people know at home what this is, it's $1.5 million, basically, for some software that will allow DWP to communicate with itself between departments, so they can come out to service calls and whatnot. It's a shame that we need this, but we do. However, I noticed, first of all, 1.476 million is the cap on this, all right? It allows for 1.476. We know how these contracts go, like these L.A. USD things, all right? Not a penny more. This isn't going to be like the police station that triples in cost, and before you know it, it costs $10 million for this $1 million software. And here's where it can run up in costs. Any expenditure under $100,000, there's no need for approval. So gee, you mean on something that's only $1.5 million, you can sit here and ring up 100, you could ring up $999,000 charges all day long, and nobody has to have any approval, so that's a real issue. Also, it calls for audits, and I want to make sure the audits are conducted as in the contract, and some other things, that there's consultants here on this project that get paid like $200 an hour, workers for this software, they're getting paid like $200 an hour. So it's a very expensive contract. However, wow, for Councilmember Perry to come out and speak against this, that is really delivering a blow, just a real thumb in the eye of Commissioner David Nahai. Wow, that's really sticking it to DWP. So let me just say, on Nahai's behalf, you know, if this is a proper contract, and things are followed, and it doesn't become $5 million, then I'm okay with it. But if we don't have this, then there could be some real service outages and real problems in the city. So for a council member to stand up against this, wow, if we have problems, wow, wow. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Dog, that'll close the public hearing on that item. Mr. Labange, and then.
I'm sorry, I've got a line here, but is there anything, this contract expires when?
Seven years from the date of it starts.
So what if we continue this to Tuesday to get explanation?
The last day for action is today, so if we take no action, it will go forward.
If we what?
If we take no action or do not approve it, but don't explicitly reject it, it will go forward without the council action tomorrow. Today's the last day.
Because it's a, whose rule is that? Your rule? Water Power's rule?
No.
It's under the city charter.
What happens if it happens on a Saturday, though? Right? It's a non-workday.
So under the city charter, legally it'll come into effect essentially.
What'd you say?
It'll come into effect legally tomorrow, under the city charter.
Today's the last day for council to...
Thank you.
Ms. Hahn?
Yeah, I was just getting clarification. So basically, you're asking us to veto the DWP's commission's decision on this particular agreement? Is that what you're...
Right, right. We have several more coming up with the same circumstances. I wanted an opportunity to dig a little deeper on the full disclosure, when it took place. It has nothing to do with, you know, supporting the department or not supporting the department. It goes more to the origins of the contract and when relationships were disclosed with respect to the contract.
And did this go to the committee?
No.
This did not go to committee?
This did not go to my committee.
Oh. Why not? Does this go to any committee?
Do you know what? Timing? It's a time limit filing.
Don't these things, don't these like, you know, the Harvard Commission comes to my committee, the Airport Commission comes to my committee. Why did this one come straight to council?
Could have done a special meeting.
Anybody know?
They needed to meet their deadline of today's date, and they couldn't wait for a committee meeting. But I am concerned about issues that have been raised about the relationship of employee or employees who are there now, who may have brought these, worked on these contracts before and maybe didn't disclose it in a timely way.
Well, it certainly seems like there's enough questions to send it to, at least to a committee for vetting.
Yeah.
Okay. I just know...
And again, my obligation is to the body, to disclose to the body what I am concerned about, and then obviously, you make your own decision.
Mr. Cardness is for the first time, and then Mr. Labange for the third. Mr. Cardness?
My question is, Jen, I want to find out why it didn't go to committees. Was it because we...
It wasn't referred.
Okay, from the staff here present, if it went to any committees, some of you would have been there to testify, correct?
Correct.
Did it go to any committees that you're aware of?
That would have been the normal procedure, Mr. Councilman.
Yes. Did it go to any committees that you're aware of on this item?
We are not aware that it went to any council committee. It was forwarded to the city council by a communication from Water and Power dated March 19th of this year.
Okay. And there's a deadline issue. So we have to handle this, we have to handle this within certain number of days from the time the commission took a vote, correct?
Correct. From the time it is received by the city council.
Okay, time it was received by the city council. When was it voted on by the commission?
March 19th.
March 18th. Okay, March 18th. It was, the council was notified on the 19th. Mr. President?
Yes.
Since we have other items on the agenda, I'd like to know if we could put this over for a few minutes so we can ascertain what happened here?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know if we can find out what happened here from the staff who's here. I think we had it has to come from the highest levels, but, you know, we can maybe take a couple minutes for him to ask some questions.
Okay.
But, you know, the staff who's here doesn't have those answers.
Okay, why don't we take one more item, and then we'll see if any of those, we'd encourage council members to... Yes, Mr. Labange?
Just call David Nahai and get him on the phone, and tell him why we should vote for this. That's all. Someone from DWP, that's all. 367.
But that still won't get it, Mr. Labange, it still doesn't go to the disclosure questions. We need, if he's willing to call in and talk about the disclosure questions, the origins of the contract, the timing on it, those are the issues that I feel an obligation to put before the body, and then obviously, you should vote however you feel like you want to vote. But I didn't want to take the body further down the road on these contracts without raising the issues, particularly since I have been presented with some information which caused me enough concern that I felt an obligation to disclose it to my colleagues. Now, again, you vote how you want to vote. We are up against a time limit filing, but I do feel an obligation to share this with you, and then whatever you decide is up to you.
Okay. If there's no objection, we'll hold over for one item, then see if there's any answers folks need. If not, we'll take it up. Ms. Perry, just right after that. Okay. Next item, please.
Next is item number two, and there's a card on this item.
Okay, item number two. We have a card from the public. Thank you for your patience. Dimitri George Bords, like to come forward for item number two in Council District 14.
Thank you very much.
Good morning.
Good morning. This dates back to a basic inspection that was done in 2005. When this was done, this is the first time in 20 years we've had these buildings, we've had an inspection on a small, little, empty lot that was there, that was, the person was doing construction of pallets. The fact was, after I contacted the inspector of the city to relay what is this issue, and the inspector at the time said, "Well, you need to make the violations or the fees are going to go higher." Well, we started doing the cleanup. It was a tenant that was doing the violations. To this point, even last year, it's been completely cleared up. However, it's amazing that I kept getting bills. My father, my late father, passed away in January, I'm taking over for this, started getting bills of 250% every month on a bill originally was $425. It became $5,800 with flurry of bills coming to the premises. And I, basically what I want to state is here is, these corrections have been made, the interest rate, I mean, the penalty interest to be compounded every month, I think we can get better interest rates from a little town in New York from some Italian mobsters, but 250% a month is very excessive over three years. And I'd like to ask the councils leniency or to review this case and to see that the bills are way out of line for what it actually was in this situation. And basically, that's basically my position on this, these corrections have been made. And for a $425 bill, it came up to $5,800. We made contacts with the inspector. The inspector said, "Until you make the corrections, they're not trained correctly to give the proper information." Even the paperwork that's here, it doesn't state this. And thank you very much. I think the city really needs to look at, you know, having inspectors being trained better so they don't give misinformation to the public. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Weezer?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. This property is in my district. This is the first I hear of it, but if we could continue this item for a week and so this gentleman's questions and issues could be addressed and come back to a week, I don't believe there's any urgency to it.
Okay.
Unless the clerk wants to...
Is there any urgency, Madam Clerk, to it?
No, there isn't.
Okay, all right, without objection, we'll continue that.
If you could speak to my staff, we'll see if we could address some of those issues with building safety. Thank you.
We'll continue that for one week. Without objection, that'll be number two, and that will come back then next, well, maybe actually a day after. We, there may be a chance we will not be meeting next Friday, so that would be to the next Tuesday after that. Is that all right, Mr. Weezer? So a week and a half?
That's fine.
In case, because I know Speaker...
We'll let him know.
Speaker Bass is going to be coming for, okay? That's all the speaker cards on item number two, so let's go ahead without objection on two and continue that. Go to item 11, see if there's any...
Item 11 is called special since there is a card on this. Mr. President, just for clarification, so this item number two is continued to June 30?
Yes, please. Oh, I'm sorry. No, we are meeting next Friday. I was two weeks ahead of myself, so let's just do one week.
To May 30?
Yeah, that'll be the 30th of May. It's the following Friday, folks, that I know Speaker Bass is being sworn in, and we're trying to see whether or not council will be that day scheduled or not. On item 11, Zuma Dogg is our first speaker, and then Arnold Sacks will be second, then we'll go out to the Valley for Sharon Brewer.
Wow, a lot of stuff going on back and forth over that last item about DWP. I've never seen anything like this, but let's talk about special event fee waivers, and we have been talking about it for two years. We've had daily news coverage. We've had Miriam, Sharon, Donna, Zuma, Matt, and everybody talk about it. I would like to say I'm very impressed with what I see today. I am seeing, is it possible that the council and president could not just head up and down if there's been a concerted, reduced effort to cut back? Am I seeing the result of that, or is this just a random anomaly? Because it looks good today. If every day was like this, we might not be in a $700 million budget crisis where the mayor might not have to triple your trash collection fees. He might not have to tax your phone and internet. He might not have to charge you 25 cents for plastic baggie. He might not have to put on a gang parcel tax. He might not have to add bulky item fee removals. They might not have to have meetings to come up with new fee services and taxes. They might not have to write more tickets for things like rolling stop signs to make more money and do everything they can to tax people because there'd be money left over because it's not wasted on special event fees, and that would be a wonderful world. So anyway, I'd like to say that, just as a reminder, in case this is an anomaly, and that we are under a budget deficit crisis in the 500 to 700 million range, and the mayor has threatened to cut police, fire, services across the board, parks and wrecks, everything. And while he's doing that, he's coming up with new taxes, new fees. Check your phone bill. There's a new 10% phone tax. There's an internet tax. There's bulky item fee removal. They want to do gang parcel tax. They want to do half a cent sales tax to pay for transportation. They want to triple your trash collection fees and write more tickets. Now, if you do a rolling stop sign turn, they'll take a picture, you get fees for that, and it's all at the backs of you guys watching on TV right here, your taxpayer money, that first they ask for more of it, tax you to death, and then they say they're going to cut their services, then they waste it for this nonsense. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Our next speaker is Arnold Sacks.
I can't follow you. Good afternoon. Thank you very much, Arnold Sacks. Very quickly, again, more special fees waived, and again, no average decided on by the city council. How much easier would it be if you said, "You know what? We're going to get together. We're going to say we allocate X amount of dollars, and that's it. Over that limit, you'll have to pay." Sorry, we are in a fiscal crisis right now, and this is what we need to do to help the city. You want to have the special fees waived, you can have a waiver fee up to maybe $2,000, $2,500, and everybody pays after that. It's equal, it's across the board, and nobody really gets, the hurt is felt by everybody who's looking for a fee waiver, and it's not put on the public who aren't allowed to go to a lot of these events. These are special events put on by special authorities, special groups that have their award ceremonies that aren't open to the general public. So in this case, everybody would be treated equally, and everybody would get the same bill, and everybody would know what was being spent, and you'd be able to budget for it appropriately. And in addition to what the mayor is doing with the fees, he just, yesterday, in the MTA board meeting, also voted to allow salaries of $175,000 for positions to be unnecessarily, to be okay by the CEO of the MTA. So if they have a position available, and it's whatever the salary is up to $175,000...
Is he talking about special event motions?
I'm talking about special fees for the city paying money. It's okay. Thank you for your time and your answers.
Thank you. Sharon Brewer on our special event motions, and Vina, Vina.
Hi, Sharon Brewer, item number 11, special event fee waivers, nine total, nine with amounts, $92,282. You have three of the events that are after the fact. You have two block parties at total $3,704. Where's the NC involvement? You have two schools, $2,613. Why do the schools need to use city departments? We have a $72,000, $70 farmer's market on Thursdays from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. The sponsor is Arts District, Little Tokyo Certified Farmer's Market. There's produce, prepared food, live music. Do all the vendors have business licenses? Collect sales taxes? Have Department of Health certificates? Divide $72,000, $70 by the number of vendors involved. No more $72,000, $70 fee waiver. We have a $10,000, $70 annual keep LA running, 5K, 10K run, plus 30K biker ride. Sponsor SEIU Local 721. 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM, 2,000 people expected. Charge $5 each. $10,000, $70 fee waiver, gone. Last year, the event asked for only $4,600. This year, they bumped it up at an additional $54,70. We have a $1,642 El Sereno Parking Grove groundbreaking, CD14 sponsor. Last year, on October 19th, '07, there was a $1,642 fee waiver for the same groundbreaking event, at least according to the motion. City council to continue waiving fees for special events for city staff involvement is fiscally unsound. If an event is good, people will find a way to make it happen without city involvement. Thank you.
Thank you very much on that matter. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Next, then, item number 10, Mr. Garcetti.
Colleagues, on item number 10, I just got off the phone with our general manager, David Nahai. He's asked us to vote yes on the motion to reject today because otherwise, this becomes law tomorrow. He will come to Energy and Environment Committee. He believes the firewalls are up and that everything can be made, but the only way he understands to make that public case is to be able to do that in committee, and we can only do that by rejecting it today. So in other words, and to reject it means voting yes on her motion. So he's asked that of the council. He'll do that hand in hand with Ms. Perry, and that'll give everybody, I believe, resolution on this, okay? So I would encourage you to vote yes, and then Mr. Nahai, DWP, will come forward to Energy and Environment as soon as possible to get the contract moving, again, if that's what they feel is the right way forward.
Item number 10, we have a card from Mr. Sacks, Arnold Sacks, item number 10. Ms. Sacks, you have one minute on this matter.
Prior to this, dealing with this, the item that was almost passed through the state legislation, that you got an unfortunate phone call, and yet here, this item was presented to the council on March 19th, and it's May 25th, and you're just hearing about it today because if you don't hear it today, the time limit will expire. Why the two-month delay? Why wasn't it in committee before? What was the process? You have complaints about what's going on in the state, yet you can't take care of your own laundry. Thank you for your time and your answers.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sacks. And with that, let's go ahead and open the roll on Ms. Perry's motion. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That motion carries, and we will move to schedule that as soon as possible in the next CNE meeting, okay? Thank you. Next item, please.
Next is item 12, and there's a card on this.
I believe, Mr. Dogg, you hit your limit already, but for the record, we'll put your card in on item number 12. Sharon Brewer, out in the San Fernando Valley, is our next speaker.
Hi, Sharon Brewer, item number 12. This is relative to declaring the Marina Del Rey Fourth of July fireworks show on July 4th a special event. Fees and costs absorbed by the city, $11,330. One of the concerns is that this, the sponsor is the County of Los Angeles, and I do see in the motion that they are supposed to give some money to DOT of $21,970, but I'm just wondering why the county needs to get a fee waiver from the city. But again, if you take this fee waiver and add it to the others, it's $103,612 in fee waivers today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll close public comment on item number 12. We can please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved. Next item.
Next item is item 13, and there's a card on this.
Okay, that is also Mr. Dogg's card. We'll put that in the record. He's reached the speaking limit for total minutes. We can go ahead and prepare the roll on 13 and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved. Next order of business, please.
Next, there are motions for posting or referral.
Those are posted and referred.
Mr. President, there are excuses on the desk.
Let's run through those.
Councilmember Smith requests to arrive at 11:30 AM on June 4th for city business. A motion is required.
Okay, let's hold that on the desk, then.
Councilmember Zion requests to leave at 12 noon on June 4th for city business. A motion is required.
All right, let's hold that on the desk as well.
And that clears the desk.
All right. I'd like to recognize Ms. Gruel for a special announcement.
Colleagues, I just want to recognize a wonderful staffer of mine, Nell Abernathy. No, don't be shy. She's been very shy over there. Nell has served as my deputy communications director for the last over year and a half and has been an incredible addition to my staff and someone who, as put in the proclamation... and has been an incredible addition to my staff and someone who, as, as put in the proclamation, her wit and her, I'd say her charm has been great in our office and she is going off to get involved in presidential politics and, and work for Senator Obama and we wish her well as she goes forward into presidential politics. I said, "You think you've been working hard with me, boy, way to go on a presidential campaign." She's been working hard, I know we'll see her back in Los Angeles, but I wanted to take this opportunity just to say thank you to her for her service and what a great friend she's been in the city council, so this is for you now.
Thank you.
And, and we do have a special thing from Mr. Garcetti, it's a great picture, on behalf of all the horses since the equestrian, thank you for all your amazing equestrian work and Eric did his little drawing, I'm not sure they could probably see this.
Thanks for that close up, that's the last time I help your staff out, just kidding.
It was very good, Eric, thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate that. Telling you, it's just a multi-talented president, that's what I'm here for, I aim to serve. Congratulations, Nellie, and with that, any other announcements of a business nature, Mr. Zine?
Thank you, Mr. President, I want to remind our viewers that on Monday, Memorial Day, we will have the annual Knogga Park Memorial Day Parade down Sherman Way, gathering at Topanga and Sherman Way, proceeding east on Sherman Way to DeSoto, south on DeSoto and then west on Van Owen, you're all invited to attend, that's a, excuse me, 20th Annual Memorial, excuse me, the Memorial Day Parade, the mayor is the guest of honor. And following that, there is a free barbecue at the American Legion Hall at Fallbrook, just north of Ventura Boulevard, so you can bring your family for a free barbecue at the American Legion Hall, Fallbrook, north of Ventura Boulevard and join us for the Memorial Day Parade and also want to send good, good wishes out to the honorary mayor of Woodland Hills, Michael Miller, who is home recovering from a medical condition. Michael Miller, get well quick, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas.
That only helps, that'd be cooler.
Mr. Cardenas?
Thank you very much, very proud to announce the First Annual Pet Care Fair, which is going to occur tomorrow, Saturday, May 24th from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM and I spoke to the dog whisperer, Caesar Milan, yesterday and he confirmed that he will be going and do a little cameo and say hello to folks and maybe give a little advice if, if he will and it's, we're going to have free giveaways, there's going to be free pet care services, information booths, the first 100 people who bring their dogs and cats will be able to get their dogs and cats spayed or neutered for free, the first 100 people and again, it's tomorrow from 10:00 to 3:00 PM and don't forget, this is also put on by Pet Orphans of Southern California, our own city animal services and it's very important for people to understand to learn how to care for your pets, they can be complicated, we're going to give free seminars and services tomorrow from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM and once again, the dog whisperer, Caesar Milan, will be in the house or actually in the park tomorrow, tomorrow, May 24th from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM at Woodley Park, the big giant park in the San Fernando Valley on the corner of Woodley and Balboa and Victory, excuse me, Victory and Woodley and Victory and Balboa, you can enter on either side, the First Annual Pet Care Fair of Los Angeles is going to be held tomorrow, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange?
Thank you very much, I just wanted to thank you, Mr. Garcetti, the flags on the Hyatt Perrin Bridge were posted today, we posted through our Fourth of July holiday to remember those veterans who gave their life in service to this country, first form is Decoration Day and the women of the South by decorating the graves of those soldiers, did decorate those soldiers from the North and out of that came Memorial Day and looking for others, so remember all those who went before us and served this great country.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. Do we have any adjourning motions today? If I can ask everybody to please rise in council chambers for our adjourning motions and as Mr. Labange mentioned, first and foremost, we rise in, in memory of all of the men and women in armed services who have fallen in wars past and in times of peace, as we celebrate Memorial Day on Monday, we certainly know that every week that list grows longer and we remember those brave men and women who have served to protect our freedoms here in this country. Ms. Gruehl.
President, William Appley was born on June 22nd, 1916 and passed away on May 8th, 2008. He lived a long and full life, leaving behind five grandchildren and three great-grandchildren. Bill and his twin brother Jack served on the same ship at Pearl Harbor on December 7th, 1941 and fought many battles during World War II. He never missed a parade on Memorial Day and was a true veteran. He spoke at the Annapolis Naval Academy to graduating classes and laid a wreath on the tomb of the Unknown Soldier at Arlington Cemetery. He also visited the Punch Bowl National Cemetery in Honolulu, Hawaii when past presidents were asked to honor our servicemen. He gave back to our local community too, he donated blood every six weeks for over 50 years, wow, and was a volunteer at St. Joseph's Hospital in Burbank for 14 years. In his time at the hospital, he held the record of the second highest hours as a volunteer. William lost his wife a few months ago and lived in North Hollywood in the same house where he raised his children, he and his new bride, Jeannie, moved to the Valley shortly after World War II. William has survived and was a loving and devoted father to four daughters, Janet, Joanne, Judy and Jackie and leaves behind, as mentioned, five grandchildren and three great-grandchildren. He also leaves behind other family members and a host of friends, may, may he rest in peace.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gruehl, Ms. Han?
I wanted to say that as of Memorial Day, we honor all those who have gone before us and, and lost their lives in, in service to this country, yesterday I was honored to attend Maritime Day celebration down in San Pedro and yesterday was honoring all those who are merchant mariners who have gone, who had lost their lives in service and an interesting fact about merchant Marines is that they lost more members from that branch of the military than any other branch of the military, which is very hard to believe, but they were really the unsung heroes during the war and still to this day do not have their GI Bill of Rights like all the other branches of the military, so it was a very solemn occasion yesterday as the average age of the surviving merchant mariners are, is 85, so many of them are passing on without their full rights like all the other veterans that have come home from wars.
Thank you, Ms. Han, Mr. Labange?
And also yesterday, Ms. Han, we gathered in the courtyard of the Spring Street steps and next year we're going to expand it even more, but we gathered with those who work for Water and Power, those who work with the Fire Department, Police Department, Public Works, Transportation, others to recognize the city employees who gave their life and fell in service. Randy Simmons, most recently passed, police officer, was the 201st officer who died in the line of duty, over 230 firefighters have died and almost 100 workers from Water and Power and its history have passed in accidents, so it was a good moment to break, we're going to build this event to recognize the public service workers who give their life to the citizens of this city as well. And also, members, I ask we join all of you in adjourning in member, memorance of Cyrus Collins, Michael Collins of our Visitors Bureau, his dad passed, he lived a beautiful life, he had three wonderful sons, he's survived by his wife, Madeline, anybody, we all know Michael and what a spirit he is, his dad was certainly that kind of spirit which gave Michael the energy that he has to do the great job he does for the Visitors Bureau. I ask for you adjourn in memory of Cyrus Collins.
We'll do all members on that, thank you, Mr. Labange, Mr. Resendal?
First, in keeping with the spirit of, of, of the Memorial Day weekend, I'll never forget from my days of the Vietnam era, people that I actually went through training with who have passed and every Memorial Day becomes more solemn for me in the role as a, as a veteran from the Vietnam era war, but last night I was with Fire Station 69 and again, we stood and rose for Brett Lovin, who passed away in Westchester a couple of three weeks ago and Danny Seibert, who was killed in a, in a motorcycle accident and David Pass, who are three firefighters, as well as, of course, Randy Simmons, that we all were part of, but this is a time of remembrance of the spirit of all of us that passed through this earth and move on and it is a memorial for us in the living to remember that, that people have put themselves in harm's way for our nation, the Iraqi in war right now, 1.7 million Americans have gone through it, over 4,000 have died, we need to stand tall and salute those who put themselves in harm's way for our country.
Thank you very much, any other adjourning motions, colleagues? May I?
May I take just a moment?
Come, come over to the mic.
Come, come over to the...
Just a moment to say, God bless America and the memories of all of those that we speak of today, and let's remember one important factor that the Babadi Cherebi, my mentor and inspiration today teaches us, we, every single one of us are the spiritual children of all of those that have made so many sacrifices to make this great country of America as great as it is and may God grant you all long, healthy and happy years as their representatives continue to do your good work, God bless you and God bless America.
Thank you very much, Rabbi, a fitting end to our, our meeting today, Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll. We will next be in session on Tuesday, that is the 27th of May, have a great weekend, a happy Memorial Day, this meeting of the Los Angeles City Council is adjourned.